All right, we're gonna get started tonight. Just for the benefit of the community, we're here today to begin the planning process for the hiring of a new permanent superintendent. So in that, when we worked back with the community a year and a half ago now, we kind of committed to the community that we were gonna facilitate an inclusive process that would involve all stakeholders' opinions. And so tonight, that process starts. It's really exciting. It's work that we look forward to doing as a board. And MSBA is here this evening, and they are leading us through this entire process. So thank you for coming. And I'll turn it over to you to start. We're just gonna get started today pretty informally, guys, and go through everything.
Thank you very much. It's very nice to see all of you again. First of all, John and I want to express our appreciation for being selected to assist you with the superintendent search in the Stillwater area public schools. We are really looking forward to the next few months, and we have a lot of information to cover tonight to get started as soon as we possibly can. So first of all, thank you very much. If you're willing, we'd like to do a quick round of introductions. If you could share with us your name. And one of the things we always like to find out about our board members is where is your hometown? And you could define hometown by where you graduated from high school or where you grew up, but whatever you consider your hometown, we'd simply like to find that out. So I'll start. My name is Barb Dorn. I work for MSBA, and my hometown is in Lake Crystal, Minnesota, where I also happen to graduate from high school.
John?
I'm John Ward. I work with Barb and Executive Services at MSBA, and I'm from Anoka.
Bev Petrie. I am from Waterloo, Iowa.
Allison Sherman, and I'm from Albert Lee, Minnesota.
Katie Hackett, and I'm from Milwaukee, Wisconsin.
Vivian Vardava, and I'm from Port Washington, New York.
Tina Riley, and I initially am, well, I'm from White Bear. However, I married my husband that I dated during high school, is from Stillwater, so I spent the majority of my life here, anyway.
Thank you.
I'm Pete Kelzenberg. I currently live in Afton, but I grew up in a military family, so I've lived everywhere up until I graduated high school at Rosemount. But now I'm a Stillwater fan and not a Irish fan anymore.
I can't top that one.
Try it.
My name is Annie Pobany. I was born and bred in Lagos, Nigeria, but hometown for me is Woodbury, Minnesota.
Woodbury, Nigeria. Wonderful. Well, thank you so much. Very diverse viewpoints and hometowns. That's really wonderful. Thank you so much for that. So we're going to begin right off the top with the agenda that you received earlier today and have in front of you. In terms of review of the process, I don't wanna spend very long on it because I think the process will start to make sense as we talk through the timeline and all of those activities. But I do wanna stress two things in terms of the process. You probably heard that in our presentation when we met with you two weeks ago. But really, when it comes to the process of superintendent search, one of the very important tenets is that state statute will govern a lot of what you do. And that is the balancing act between the open meeting law and the data practices act. So all of the activities that you conduct during a superintendent search must be held in the open. The open meeting law applies to all facets of the search. It applies to deliberating who you're going to bring in as finalists. It applies to the interviews themselves. It applies to the deliberations you'll make while deciding who to move forward into the second round of candidates, and it applies to the deliberations around selecting the lone finalists that you would like to enter negotiations with to be your next superintendent. Now balancing the open meeting law is the data privacy laws, and we talked a bit about that. So for example, when you are discussing candidates, because you will see all of the application materials from everyone who's applied for your position, those names must be kept private forever and always. When you're debating who to bring forth into the first round of interviews, they are then named a finalist. According to statute, if you interview them, they're a finalist, not a semifinalist, just a finalist. Those names and those names alone go public, so you can share them at the conclusion of that meeting. During your discussions, however, you must refer to them as candidate A, candidate B, candidate C. We will do the same and not share any identifying information about the person you're discussing. You, for instance, would not say, "I like candidate C because she's been a principal in Matamidi." That's identifying information by gender and by position. So we're gonna work with you in interview training to make sure that your deliberations in the public do not reveal any private data when you're discussing those applicants. So that's state statute, which applies to every step of this process. The second part of the process that we wanna review with you is to remind you that this is yours. This is the board's process. You will take ownership of this from the beginning to end. We will guide, advise, recommend, suggest, answer all questions, and yet this is something that you, as a board, will wrap your arms around and take it from the first steps to the closing steps. All right? So it's definitely not our process, it is yours. And I think you'll get to feel that the further you go into the process, that you are truly taking ownership of everything. But we wanna make sure you're comfortable with the process as well. So again, questions are welcome at all times. So as far as review of the process, that really is all we typically say at this point, is state statute and board ownership. All right? So any questions on those generalities before we dive in a little bit deeper to the timeline? Okay, there being none, why don't we talk about timeline? There is a proposed timeline in here already. I'm gonna turn it back over to Chair Sherman to lead us through the timeline conversation. But yes, we do want to identify very specifically when everything will occur, not just the day, but the time that all of these meetings will occur. So Allison, it's all yours.
Yeah. Okay, so hopefully everyone has their calendars up to date here, and Joan has been great at kind of telling us what's available space-wise, so that has limited some of our options. So when we're looking at the first, we're gonna be looking at the highlighted portions of the packet, just the highlighted ones. So the first week, you'll notice that's spring break. So I don't know that what people's plans are here, but I anticipated that maybe people would be going out of town or being, wanting to, you know, have some more flexibility during that time with their families. So one date, and Joan, correct me if I'm wrong here, one of the dates, were we looking at March 1st? Was that where we noted out? For that, that's for the interview training to discuss stakeholder report, interview questions, and procedures. Vivian?
Oh, well, I won't be here.
Okay, you're gone, right, for a month?
I'm coming back on March 7th or something, so I could do, but I know, I realize that was spring break, too. But if it's a virtual thing, I can attend virtually, maybe.
You may attend virtually as long as it's posted at least three days in advance that you are phoning in or zooming in or whatever as a board member, and you can then participate if you post where you're zooming in from, and people could join you in that location if they wanted to.
Okay.
So, yes, you can participate.
You're out of the country, right?
They could join me.
Okay.
They just, yeah.
But you, I just wanna be sensitive to your time and what you're there for, so I don't know if it works out great. Could, if she was missing, could she get caught up when she gets back before the, like, is there a way to get some of the training?
Yes, absolutely. We could do interview training at a later date with you as well, if you'd like to.
Okay. Was there any other conflict from anyone? I mean, does March 1st work for people? I know it's not giving us a ton of options, but with that whole spring break week, I kinda wanted to avoid that.
What time are we looking at, March 1st?
March 1st.
What time?
We didn't have a time.
Oh.
We're kind of open. I know that with your work schedule, it's best to be at least 5:30, right?
Yeah.
So what would be happening on March 1st?
That would be, that's the, we meet just for interview training. The legalities of what we can ask, what we can't ask.
Oh, okay.
More of what Barb was saying. So just, just the training on how to conduct interviews.
How long would the training be?
That usually runs an hour and a half to two hours. We'll bring you proposed questions for round one that revolve around your hiring criteria. So not only interview training on what you do, what you don't do, how it sort of works, but also we want to actually have you pick the questions for round one, and we'll also be sharing with you the stakeholder report at that time and discussing the stakeholder report in light of the hiring criteria and the interview questions themselves. So about two hours, it's gone less, it's gone more.
Chair Sherman?
Yes.
Okay, we do have a conflict on March 1st, sorry.
Oh, you do?
In this space.
Oh.
Sorry about that. I just saw it.
What about March 2nd? But I know that, um...
Well, we have a board meeting on 3rd. Let me check, the 2nd would be Wednesday.
2nd is Ash Wednesday.
It's Ash Wednesday. I know. Does spring break?
Can we do it after spring break?
No, I...
They need to shift everything.
Is there any chance that we could do it in one of the, in the meeting space over at Central? I mean, I, this would probably need to be recorded. I mean, do we still have the capability of being able to record and stream from over there, or what would be the situation there? What happened to John?
He's done it in the past.
We've done it in the past. I believe it requires having John come in and set up all his equipment. It's not as plug and play as it is here, but I think we can talk to him and see if that's a possibility.
I'm just saying that if we have a hard time finding a date, that might be an option, a fallback position.
Right, because...
Monday, possibility the 28th. That's open.
The 28th, 28th of February?
Yes, so that week could be the Monday of that.
Can I check my calendars?
Monday to 28th.
28th.
Does that work for you, Barb, and John?
February 28th does. Monday, the 28th in the evening is what you're thinking, possibly? Yes. And we would be joining you virtually unless, for some reason, as we discussed later, you want us here in person. But yeah, the 28th is open.
The 28th is open for me as well.
And that's a Monday? I think I can, I can attend easier, easiest on a Monday, actually, even from where I am.
And I'd like to avoid the Ash Wednesday. I think that's a conflict for so many, so...
I'm available.
Is that the 28th? Going once? Great. The 28th works.
In a time? I'm sorry.
Yeah, I was gonna say, time-wise, does, is 5:30 okay with people? Is that, is that a reasonable time?
Does it work better for, at 6:00? Annie, for you? To give that.
We're gonna be here, right? So we're, 5:30 is fine for me. Vivian, you're the one, it's about seven hours?
Yeah, I don't know. I'm like, how, when is that?
So that's gonna be...
Like midnight or something?
That'll be 12:30, 1:00 a.m.
a.m.?
Yeah, either 12:30, midnight till 1:00 a.m.
Yeah, so midnight, like right after midnight, I guess, it'll be okay.
It'll be okay?
And again, if you can't, it sounds like they can do a session with you.
Is it the day before, or is it the day after?
It's the day af, it's the day after. So it's gonna be March 1st for you.
Okay.
And it'll be February 28th for us.
Okay. So it looks like February 28th for, for the interview training, with the caveat that Vivian may or may not kind of come in via Zoom, and if she can't, or we, that doesn't work out, Barb, then we'd connect individually with her.
Sure.
Okay. And Annie, was 5:30?
Yeah.
Is that push, okay, 5:30?
Thank you.
So can I just ask Joan a question? Joan, should we be putting this on our calendars? Are you gonna go ahead and issue a good Google invitations for us?
I'll put it on the calendar, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, first one done. Onto the second highlight. We need the next step, and there's steps in there with the, the application deadline. Every, the unhighlighted areas are MSBA's work. So then they come back to us where we meet to determine finalists, interview questions, procedures, and then we review interview training. We need one date, and I believe Joan found an open date on March 24th. Is that right, Joan?
And there may be other dates. I was just kind of...
That was the one that immediately popped out without conflict. I don't, we can look at other dates, I just thought sometimes throwing it out there to start, and if anyone has any major conflicts or preferences? I do not have any conflicts, so...
Works for me.
Okay, it works for me as well.
Fourth works.
What day is that?
Thursday.
Thursday.
Yes.
Is that in March? March 20?
March 24th.
Okay.
Again, thank you, Joan, for doing all this pre-checking. Very helpful. And so, again, 5:30? Probably? Annie, is that probably fine? Okay.
Thank you.
Yep, no problem. Great. Okay, so now the next category, we, where we conduct first round of interviews, we actually need two days for that, and it will be consecutive days. So I think what Joan had looked at on the calendars, and again, starting point, but we're far, pretty far enough out here, was March 28th followed by the 29th. And Barb, I'll let you talk about, like, you may have three cand, four candidates one day, three candidates the next day, and you pick it up, you know?
Correct, correct. So usually, we recommend splitting that into two days because the typical number of interviews is six. Sometimes it's four or five, sometimes it's seven. But if you try to do six interviews in one day, they're one-hour interviews, you will be exhausted after the third one or fourth one. So we recommend, to be fair to the candidates, that you do them in two days. And so if you started, for instance, at 5 o'clock, for example, you could interview someone at 5:00, 6:15, 7:30, and then at 8:30 be done. Or on the second day, you would then take a break at 8:30, give us a half hour to tabulate all of your input, and start deliberations at 9:00. And sometimes deliberations take a half hour, sometimes they take three hours, depending upon the board and the consensus around candidates. So if you started at 5:00 or 5:30, 6 o'clock, you could be done by 9:30, 10:00, 10:30. But we do like them back-to-back, just so that you're kind of in the mode and you're interviewing candidates, but you're not leaving too much of a gap between the first three and the second three or four, or the first four and the last two, or whatever it might be.
And so I definitely don't, I know, Annie, you've got work commitments. I don't know if there's any opportunity to start at 5:00 on, on those days, or if we should really stick to the 5:30?
It's Monday and Tuesday.
It's easier for me to have it at 5:30 as well.
Okay.
Just, I mean, it, 'cause I gotta leave, if, if it's gonna be 5:00, I gotta leave work at 4:30.
Yeah, so, okay.
5:30?
Yeah.
So that would put 5:30, I mean, is that doable from a, I just wanna be sensitive to the candidate's time to going too late, or is 5:30 okay?
Yeah, that'd be fine. The last interview would be at 8:00 o'clock, they'd be done by 9:00.
Okay.
You'd begin deliberations at 9:30, so it's more on you as a board, if you don't mind going late into the evening, so, sure.
When you say deliberations, is there, like, do you have some, like, sheets we fill out and talk about, or what do you mean deliberations after the interview?
Yep. We have during interview training, we'll help you understand that you provide your own individual input on the ratings forms of each question for each candidate, and then we provide you with an overview of the results from the board. And then we also have a guideline to help you discuss the strengths of each of the candidates, and you start to lean toward another candidate or one to bring back for round two. So you're discussing sort of what you saw, and who you feel might be the best fit for Stillwater area, and who you'd like to bring back for round two, or if it's the second round, who you'd like to make an offer to. But you, there is time initially, you don't dive right into making a motion to hire someone, you wanna talk about each candidate and what you noticed their strengths were, incorporating your own thoughts, as well as the overall board ratings of each candidate, and then someone might say, "I'm leaning toward this person," and you start to see consensus build.
And I'm open on both days, and 5:30 is fine. And it's the, the second day, the 29th, that will be the deliberations of who we wanna narrow down that, those first round interviews to.
Okay.
It's one meeting. Maybe you said that, they wouldn't adjourn.
Go ahead and explain that if you'd like to.
So what you'll do on the first night is break, not adjourn the meeting, and continue the next night, so.
Okay, thank you, John.
Great.
I'm available those days, too.
Okay. It doesn't seem like there's a conflict. You guys are easy. I love it. Okay, then we need one day on the, oh, is this where we could do the reference? So do we want, I guess one decision that the board would need to make is if we wanna do background checks. And these are more extensive background checks, so we might wanna get Cindy's input on her thoughts from an HR perspective on that, or individual board director thoughts. Those come at an additional cost. Do you wanna share that again? I have it.
And it is something that's on the agenda to talk about later, is background checks. It's in the proposal. You will, of course, have to do a standard criminal background check. Every employee of the district has to undergo that. It's a standard $15 BCA check that everyone will undergo if they wanna work in Stillwater area. These background checks are more in-depth to verify their educational credentials, to verify their work history, and the criminal background check. And it does take five to seven days for the company we use to conduct that background check. Typically, districts don't do this as a practice, but there are districts that want to ensure that if someone says they have a PhD from UCLA, they wanna be sure that it's not just on the resume. They want to confirm that they actually do. And so the resident, excuse me, the educational credential and the work history... And so the resident, excuse me, the educational credential and the work history, if they said they've worked somewhere for X number of years, Good Hire is the firm that we use to do these background checks. We'll actually make phone calls to the universities and the employers that this person claims to have worked at. It is an additional $395 per finalist, which is why we recommend you do it on the second-round individuals, which is usually three people, versus doing them on all six or seven upfront, but you can choose to do that as well. We just need a, a five to seven-day gap before you deliberate, because we want those results back to you as board members before you choose what you'd like to do. And it's an option.
It's an, and it is, it's an option, and we can, there is time on the agenda to talk about that, but I guess I wanted to cover it really quick because if that's something the board, if you think in the back of your head that's something we wanna be doing as a board, it would require looking at one of the later dates on that option. So it wouldn't, we wouldn't wanna do it on the, you know, 30th or 31st. We'd wanna be doing it like April 7th, more towards the end of that timeframe to allow for the background check to be conducted. March 7th is available. Or, I'm sorry, April 7th is available here. So if that date works, we can talk about that decision, you know, later on in the agenda. But it, if that date works for everyone, that allows us the flexibility to decide yes or no to do that.
I have a question about, I mean, I, do we need to be at all concerned about timing at that point in the process? In terms of, okay, so I was, I was at the, um, MSBA Leadership Conference last, um, Thursday and Friday, and there was talk that, um, this could be, there could be sort of an unprecedentedly high number of superintendents that are, or districts that are go, looking for superintendents this year. And so the, um, the competition may be higher this year than it has been in the past. So what about, what can you tell us about that point, you know, early April in the process?
That's a great question. Thank you. Uh, it is definitely going to be the candidates, a candidate's market. We used to say, is it buyers or sellers? But it's a candidate's market this year. There are going to be many opportunities. If you are interviewing in early April, that is in the midst of search season. You are not late by any means. Many searches will be beginning in April, because they find out they don't have a superintendent. When a superintendent has taken a position in March or April at some point, we even started a search last year in the middle of May. It's very late. However, if that is a concern, I would recommend perhaps you forego the idea of the in-depth background checks and interview sooner rather than later. One week should not make a difference, and yet we don't have a crystal ball to, to realize what other districts might be opening up and what their schedules might be. Everyone sets the timeframe based around when the board is available, when you're conducting interviews. Every once in a while, someone's name is in two or three different pools. And it does become on occasion, whoever makes an offer first that they find attractive, they will accept and sometimes withdraw from consideration of other searches. John, have you seen that, too?
Yeah, I, I do think there's a profile that emerges for, for districts based on where they are, their size, um, and I don't think that's gonna negatively affect Stillwater. It's gonna be one of a couple of districts in the metro to out front, I think. There'll be, typically, there's a secondary ripple effect as people get hired, um, but you're out in front of that. But different pools attract a different s, kind of, uh, profile of a candidate.
So, I'll ask a quick question here. The, um, the BCA background check does not include the educational background, does not include, employment background. It's mainly criminal background and all that. What are the implications, though, if we forego the, um, in-depth background check? Cause there could be consequences. I mean, I've seen people claim to have things that they don't, and, uh, it's been, it's been an issue. And in our situation, if we have those kinds of, that's gonna be, it's gonna be really bad for us.
Yes.
So.
You won't know it until you know it, and, uh, people will dig into the ba, past histories of the candidates that you're looking at, as well as the finalists. Sometimes someone is working in a district for a year or two before it surfaces that they don't actually have the degree they claim to have. It's something similar. Or it's from a, a university, not what they listed. Happens very rarely, and yet it does happen. And the consequences simply would be the credibility of that individual would be damaged. And it would be up to the board as to decide if you'd like to retain them, or for some reason, consider that a breach of contract. The consequences can be significant. It doesn't happen very often, though, but it does happen.
And, and, yeah, i- i- it's true. It doesn't happen that often, but it could happen, and it could happen to us. You know, so the probability there is, is slim, but it, you know, it still could happen. And if that kind of thing happens, then we have to start all over again, and that's gonna cost us more. It's, you know, time and delays. So one week, one week will not change anything. It's good to do it right than not to do it at all.
Does everyone, I mean, where is everyone else out with doing the, the additional background checks, the $400? Tina?
I think, you know, from, from what I see, it is very normal and very common to do the background checks in anybody with a high-profile leadership position. And I, I would, um, I, I would be interested in, in making sure we have that done.
One option for you to consider, to both of those points, thank you, is you could choose to do background checks on everyone that you name as a finalist, which might be six or seven people. And therefore, between round one and round two, you would have completed background checks on all of them, and you'd have in hand, ready for your finalist in the second round, the complete background check. And you could move up the second round sooner if the timing was a concern for you, so.
I, I think it's better to just do the, like, two or three finalists. I don't think we should be doing all seven. But I do think it's good to do it.
I think that's kind of standard. It, the finalists do that, or even before the job is completely offered, the, the background checks are done.
I'm not, did you have a?
I mean, I, I'm just wondering, is it, is it inappropriate? I mean, like, if we've, if we've settled on, um, well, okay, so walk me through the process again. Would we be doing this? Would we have already been settled on our final, finalist at that point, or, or is this just, we, we would do deliberations at a different time, or how, how would that work exactly?
You could conduct the background checks at three different phases in the process. The first is, as soon as you name, I'll take six as an arbitrary number. If you name six finalists, you start background checks the next day on all six. And we'd facilitate those and contact those folks and let them know that, because they need to fill out information, giving us permission to do so. You could do it right away on your finalists, whether it's six or seven or eight. You also could do it after round one, when you've whittled it down to usually three, and do it only on those three. But then again, you need that one-week gap between after round one and be, you know, beginning of round two. So you have the background checks in hand before round two and your deliberations of who to make an offer to. The third option is to conduct a background check on your lone finalist, the person that you have selected as the person you'd like to make an offer to. Do it after round two during the negotiation process. And the thing that you can do in that case, if you choose to wait and do it after, but before they begin employment in the district, is we would ensure that every candidate knows you will be doing an in-depth background check on educational credentials and work history after they have been named the lone finalist, and so they're expecting it. And if they're trying to hide something, they know that you are going to find it, because you are going to be do, doing the in-depth background check during the negotiations phase. So, one, two, or three.
Is there, I know you said not every district does this. Is there a more, for the, for those that do? Is there a more popular time? I mean, I, I'm hesitant to do it on all six, um, just because of the expense, but, you know, maybe in the second two options?
It's most common for large districts to do this. You know, districts with one or two or 3,000 students sometimes don't, but large districts, it is fairly standard part of the process. And most districts, in the interest of, um, time, do it on the finalists, meaning maybe six people.
Okay, so can we, I think we can still do this, but can we just, because we can give a contingent offer, contingent on the background check
Yes.
On the finalist. So you can still give a contingent offer to that person, that one person that we wanna give the offer to, but it's gonna be contingent on that in-depth background check. So from the very beginning, we make that very clear. If it comes back, that there's something in the background that the person did not report, then we can move on to the second person and, uh, whoever it is.
Yep, and we have language in the motions that we suggest you make, and they are definitely always contingent on the successful background check with results acceptable to the school board. So yes, thank you.
I guess I would, I would think we'd wanna do it on the, not the six finalists, but the three we wanna bring, you know, wanna bring back, I guess. And we, we do it on those three. We get their permission to do it on those three, and we do it before we, maybe as we're interviewing them, right? We, we do it, and we're interviewing them, and then we let them know it's contingent, cause we don't wanna, I just don't think, like, it'll cost us $800 if we have three candidates, right? It'll cost us $800 extra to do all three of them. But if we end up offering it to somebody and then pulling it because like, something was in their background, then we have to go back, and somebody else might have gotten the other, one of the other two candidates, plus then they know they're not our first choice. So I just think it's better to, to do the last three finalists and then interview them, like, like, everybody who interviews has to agree to the background check. You can have them fill out all the information ahead of time, the, the six people, but then you only do the three people who you end up with. Like, to re, to re-interview, just to kind of compress that process, but still have it for all three.
Where, um, we haven't heard from Pete or Katie. Do you have?
Yeah, um. So we're really debating, we're not debating the cost of six background checks, but three, because the assumption is we would do three background checks. And then the other part is, is the time. So you say it takes about a week. So that week would be between either six and three, or between three and one candidates, right?
No, between three and one is all done in one evening. You'll interview three people, and that evening, you'll whittle it down to one person.
Oh, but I'm thinking the, uh, the background.
After that.
Checks. Oh, then you do the background check.
On that one person, after you've made a motion to make an offer contingent on them successfully.
But if you're doing three, you're doing it after you whittle down the first interviews.
Right.
And then you're picking your kind of final candidates. And that's why then the, you, you need a week before you do the second round.
And there's a, a little bit of a gamble there. So I, to me, it seems like it's kind of rare, so it's kind of a, a trust-but-verify situation. So y- you assume they're coming in with a pretty honest resume, and you go forward with that, and then as a backstop, y- you, you do that afterwards, and if you find out something wrong, you're, you're kind of glad that you caught it before you made the offer. But you're kind of going in assuming that they're coming in with an honest resume. So I'm fine with three, but the, the, the cost is not a big deal considering what we're trying to get at, so.
Katie?
Um, I think I'm kind of landing on the three as well. I think the, if we just do, wait till the one, I just worry about timing-wise, since that'll push us off another week. Um, and I feel like if this is something that sounds like most people wanna be doing, that we maybe should plan ahead for that and, and just work it into the process.
So that would mean then we would conduct the first round of interviews on the 28th and the 29th, and then we would be looking at April 7th. So that we can have those background checks in hand.
Well, I don't think you even need them in hand, do you? When do we make our decision?
April 7th, you would make a decision.
Decision, okay.
Cause you're doing it right away.
So between March 29, when we're done with the interviews, you say we, we deliberate that evening yet. And are we making a, a decision that evening, or just kind of talking through?
To get to your top three.
Oh, to get to the top three. And then I imagine there's a lot of community input at that point, because everything's open, right? So they're gonna see it, and they're gonna.
Kind of beforehand, I guess I would say that a lot of the, the community input is gonna happen before we get to that, those deliberations, correct?
Correct. The stakeholder survey is usually launched immediately, and one of the things we wanna talk about tonight is potential stakeholder involvement in your second round of interviews. Whether or not that is something that you're going to want to bring in, and the pros and cons of doing so. But on the 29th, you'd whittle it from six, about six, to three. And then a week would go by, and during that week, the background checks would be in process, and the board would do, would be doing some background checks. We'll have you appoint one person on the board to do some due diligence on behalf of the board. We'll have checked references during the vetting period, but you should do some during that week as well. And then on the 7th, if you interview three people, at the end of that meeting, you'll deliberate and select one person that you'd like to negotiate an offer with.
Okay.
And that motion will be contingent on the successful background check. And that will be done by then. You should have that material in your hand. If you have a week, you'll be looking at it. Some of it's private data, so once again, you'll need to be careful with it. After that, the board, excuse me, the district will still require, I believe, the standard BCA background criminal check to become an employee of the district. That's standard for everybody. But this is just the much more in-depth one, so. Did that help?
Yep.
Okay.
And have we decided on April 7 already?
Well, if we're, it sounds like that we're kind of all on board with the background checks of the three, so then yes, it kind of makes the decision for us. Did, I know, Bev, you were kind of worried about the timeline. How are you feeling about that?
I guess the extra week is, is hopefully not going to disadvantage us. That was, that was my primary concern.
And just so I'm clear, you don't have necessarily have that concern. You think our timeline, even going on the 7th, will be okay?
Yeah, I, you know, something could unexpectedly happen, but in, you know, around the metro, I, I think you're out in front.
Okay.
We just can't predict if there's a district that's going to open up and try and compress a search into three weeks so that they beat Stillwater. I mean, we can't predict that. That would not be a good idea, cause that's too tight of a timeframe. We just have no control over other timelines for other searches, and we don't know who's opening up yet over the next three or four months. There'll be some.
Vivian?
You said something about having people from the other, outside community enter into the final interview, but then shouldn't they be trained? I mean,
They will be.
Be trained ahead of time, too.
Yep, we'll get there.
Yep. Can I just ask really quick? I don't know, but Cindy, do you have any thoughts? I mean, you're our district HR. Do you have any thoughts on anything that we're discussing related to the backgrounds, or any?
No, I agree with the conversation. People made great points, and I think the three is a really good choice.
Okay.
You don't want anything to come up after the fact.
Right.
So that's good.
Okay. Okay, so if, was everyone good on the 7th, then? I think we all were good. Great.
Can I just ask a quick question?
Yep.
I know, I said Bob, sorry. I know Bev is worried about the seven days, right?
I'm okay with it now.
Yeah, okay. So, um, is it possible to, for the chair to, for those three candidates, while we wait for the background checks to come back, for the chair to reach out to these candidates? Let me know if it's, if it's not. For the chair to reach out to these candidates, just, you know, ahead of time. Just some professional interactions in terms of, we're still interested in you, we're waiting for the background, just so they know that we're still interested in them. They were just waiting for the background before we make a decision.
Absolutely, and that actually would dovetail with doing some reference checks. The board would have some reference checking to do anyway during that period, and very often, it's the chair that will do that in the interim between round one and round two.
If there was some change in the, you know, the statewide hiring process, if something came up that it's not foreseeable right now, is there a chance to ever move anything up and make a dis, a determination that we're gonna go with just one background check on our favor? I mean, is, or is this decision, once we make it, that's the decision?
You can change, uh, the schedule based upon the board's action. So you are, you are setting it tonight. This is what we'll publish. This is what we'll put in the brochure, as far as timelines. If something changes, though, you as a board have the authority to change the timeline.
So if something comes up that, I mean, it doesn't sound like it's likely, but you never say never.
Correct.
We might have to kind of regather what our thoughts are.
You're the board.
Yep. Okay.
I mean, the other thing I would think is if someone's interviewing for multiple super, superintendent roles, and they have the schedules, they're gonna wanna wait until everyone's made their decision and then make their decision, like, between the districts. I, I doubt, like, they'd let themselves be pressured, like, be pressured into like, no, you must make the decision tonight, you know? I mean, that's not appropriate, I don't think.
Usually candidates, I, I would say best practices, and John, you can answer this better than I can, but best practices are, if there is a, a finalist who's been selected as the lone finalist and an offer has been made, there is a professional courtesy, I believe, that those negotiations should be wrapped up within a week or two. If a candidate gets a reputation of stringing along a school board for a month because they're waiting for a better offer, that candidate's reputation could be tarnished, and board members speak to one another. So someone who has strung you along for a long time and then takes another offer, I think that could come back at them. So mostly, they'll make a decision either very soon or within a week or two. John, am I correct on that?
No, that's true. Um, that negotiation process is quick typically. Over time, I've seen a couple boards, um, because I was still working in another district and I was looking. You, you plan as the candidate the dates, so the firmer as they can be, the better. When they get moved around, it, it begs a why question.
Okay.
And then people start to speculate on what the board is doing, and why did they move it up, move it back. So, I mean, I think you should go into it with the idea that we're gonna
Stay with them.
Stay with these unless something really unusual happens. Because, yeah, candidates will start to block out there. If they think they're good, they'll start to block that out.
Okay. Well, I think we're good on the 7th. Pete, did you have something to?
Th- this might come up later, but I'm thinking of it right now. Is, do, does all the candidate activity happen right here at the interview table? Is there anything where they go out into the schools and meet principals, meet people at central services as part of their interview process?
Yep, very often. In the second round, we set up tours of the district and find a host to take them around to the different buildings, meet with different. meet with different, um, groups, have lunch in the community. That's part of the host responsibilities on that date. If it's April 7th, you'll have sort of a rotating day where one candidate meets with so-and-so at 10, and someone else meets with that person at 11. And so, yes, sort of a round robin of activity in the district and tours, however you would like to set it up. Every district does it slightly differently.
Okay. But the caveat would be everyone gets treated the same.
Right.
Gets the same experience. And in a smaller district, we got asked the question, could the current principal show them around? And that person might be a candidate. Well, no, then we have to have a third party. Everybody gets the same experience, so, but yeah, we've done that.
All right. I think, was that everything? Because then it's dictated after that. It's just immediately after the 7th, we go into...
And 5:30 on the 7th, correct?
Yes.
Did I hear that? Okay. Yes, so then the next line would say, um, April 8th?
Yep.
And one question I would have for you is, typically, not always, a board will designate one person to negotiate the contract with the chosen candidate. It's very often the board chair, very often in conjunction with the HR expert in the district. It is not usually a subcommittee, but I wanted to check with you as to how you want to proceed with this. Because if it is a board designee that begins on April 8th to negotiate that contract, then the open meeting law doesn't apply if it's one person. If you have a subcommittee that's going to be doing it, you need to give yourselves a three-day posting in order to post when you're negotiating with that candidate. And those three days can sometimes cost you some momentum and some interest on behalf of the candidate. So I wanted to ask if I could change that to board designee begins negotiations, or if you want a committee involved in the negotiations process.
I was just wondering, if we know it's going to be on the 8th, can you, can you announce that it's going to be on the 8th more than three days in advance? Because you know what the meeting is, you just don't know who the candidate is. So couldn't you still announce it and not have to move that meeting?
You could unless the candidate turns out to have a conflict on that day, that they aren't available on the 8th, because you don't know who you're hiring yet, and they don't know what their schedule necessarily is. They would bend over backwards to be available, but sometimes they have some commitments that if you post a day and time on the 8th to start negotiations, they just can't make it. And then you start over with a new three-day calendar.
So if, um, our HR rep, if Cindy is doing that, if we have a designee, it always is coming back to the board?
Always.
I mean, it's always coming back. It's just as simply to expedite the process.
Correct.
Okay. Any other thoughts? Katie?
Well, I would prefer a designee. I feel like that'll streamline the process a little bit and save us a little bit of time. That's just my personal preference.
Yeah, I would agree with that. I think that it, it just makes sense to do it that way. You know, I'm, I'm just not sure we want to conduct negotiations as, in a public venue anyway. I think that that is more appropriately done, you know, with the board chair and the candidate, because it will come back again. It will come back to the board for approval.
Okay.
Question. So would that be something that would be here, or would the negotiations be?
Uh, open meeting law wouldn't apply if one board member is doing it, or if Chris, or if, um, sorry.
Cindy.
Thank you. If you were working on it as well, then it would not.
I'm just wondering, it's a Friday, if we should move it back and do, like, the 6th and the 7th, instead of the 7th and the 8th, to a Wednesday, and then a Thursday?
Very often, negotiations are done by phone calls and emails. You don't need to have an actual meeting and sit down and talk about it. You may have a candidate from out of state, and you're negotiating long distance. So I don't think you need to worry about a room to reserve for negotiations.
Does anyone else have any thoughts on designee versus, um, the committee?
I like the idea of a designee with the HR person.
Right, obviously, yeah.
Our parameters are already going to be set, correct?
Right.
Mm-hmm. And do you have a regular board meeting set in April, then, that you could approve the employment contract at? If, if it's the middle of April, you would have plenty of time, April 8th until the middle of April?
Yeah, April 14th and April 20th are open.
I suggest you try to have an employment contract signed or agreed to on the 14th by the board.
Could we, could we have a special meeting to, to move it up so that, you know, we know it's done?
You could.
I would think we'd want it as soon after the contract negotiations.
Cindy, did you have a comment?
I was just kind of reflecting on what Joan said. And I was going to say that there will be a lot of excitement around this person, and we want to make sure they're welcome, and people are understanding that. So really, if a Thursday and then Friday negotiation that may not be done, and a meeting a week later, I, I kind of like what you were saying, Vivian. It might be better to move it along as quickly as we can. And so if people are available on the 6th, maybe that is a little bit better idea, because it gives a little more time.
Was there, was the space available on the 6th?
Space is fine on that Wednesday.
On the 6th?
I do have a conflict, but I could possibly miss.
Okay.
We have a special meeting on the 30th, but it's for disbursements.
So you have the, um, the final negotiation, and you come to a conclusion. Then what seals the deal is when the board votes on it at their meeting. But it's kind of a done deal, right? So, uh, between then and the board meeting, you never really lose anybody at that point, do you?
Normally, no.
Okay.
Normally, no.
Possible, but not likely?
Mm-hmm. You could potentially, again, you don't want a candidate to feel pressured or rushed, but you could say, if you were to interview on the 6th or 7th, negotiations begin the 7th or 8th, they're going to want to talk to you over the weekend. And I know board members work over the weekend. So you'll be having conversations with your candidate on Saturday, maybe Sunday. You could have a special meeting on Monday, the 11th, and set the 11th as a possible special meeting to approve the employment contract. Puts a little pressure on your candidate, that's only three or four days. But you will, in advance, have a contract prepared that you're comfortable with. And so it might just be a matter of dotting the i's and crossing the t's.
Okay, so a couple things. If we moved the meeting to the 6th, does anyone have a conflict? I know Katie thinks you can move your con, what your conflict is. Would the background checks be back by the 6th?
They should be.
What meeting are we moving to the 6th again?
More along, so that we have the 6th and negotiating on the 7th, and kind of leading up to the Monday. I think that Cindy was just saying there's a lot of excitement. You want to draw it to a conclusion, and maybe Friday didn't allow, a Thursday or Friday didn't allow for enough time for that.
Can I ask a question about, um, that seems like, okay, so if, let's say we meet on Thursday, negotiations start on Friday, and then we're expecting a meeting on Monday. I mean, what if you have a candidate who says, I'd like three days to think about it? Then, I mean, I, does that happen a lot?
It does. They might want to visit the communities again. They might want to bring family up over the weekend to take a look around. I, I think you would not be losing much by meeting on the 14th. That's still less than a week, isn't it, the 7th, 14th? Oh, it's one week, the 7th to the 14th. That's sooner than many boards are able to meet to approve a contract. So I don't think you have to feel pressured, and yet this is your, your call. If a candidate wants this job, this is the job they're looking for. They're willing to spend seven days negotiating, and they may tell you verbally on Saturday, I'm in, I'm done, where do I sign? And then the board knows that, and you discuss it. It's just a formality to approve it on the 14th, unless something drastic happens. Typically does not happen. You never know.
Yeah, I, I mean, my opinion, I'd rather just stay with the 7th and the 14th, if it's not a huge time consideration, versus scheduling special meetings, and you already have a conflict on the 6th. But I'm open, I'm flexible. Yes, Annie?
Yeah, I agree. I mean, I think it would be too much of a rush for us to do negotiations than, you know, make an offer or meet to the next day. I mean, it's too tight. However, though, you can still keep, um, you can keep the communication open with the person that you're interested in, even within that week, right? As long as you continue to just, you know, keep calling, say, hey, listen, we're interested in you. We just want you to know. That relationship in itself is, I think it's ideal. So we don't have to rush this. I think we want to, we want to be able to do it right. Because negotiation in terms of what the contract will be, benefit, salary, benefits and all that, right? And you also have to look at experience, I mean, some thoughts that goes into it. So I, I don't think it's something that we should rush. But as a board chair, you, you know, keep the communication open.
Tina, Pete, do you guys have any thoughts on?
No, I, I don't think it really matters.
Did you have any opinion, 7th and the 14th? I just, yeah, okay. Unless someone objects, let's just keep it the 7th and the 14th.
And what time would that regular meeting be, then, on the 14th?
That is, that should be 6:30.
6:30, 6:30. Okay. May I read this back to you, just to make sure that I've taken the correct notes? And then I'll make these adjustments and send them to you for, um, your records. Meeting tonight on the 18th at 6:00. We will open the survey, depending upon our conversation, a little bit later tonight, on the 21st, which is Friday. Uh, that will be open for two weeks through February 6th. We will hold our Q and A session on February 1st at 4 o'clock. That is not a board meeting. You do not need to attend. Uh, you'll be able to watch it later if you would like to, uh, through a link on the website. Uh, but that is something that we'll facilitate and set up. And I'll work with the district staff to get the link and communication sent out to people who might want to submit questions in advance of the Q and A, and/or join us that day and, and submit questions. We have found that 4 o'clock is a good time for those, because many of the people that do log on to watch it live are staff. And that's after their hours of the day, but it's before they maybe go home. Uh, so 4 o'clock has tended to be probably one of our better attended times. We've tried 7, we've tried 6, we've tried 3. 4 o'clock does draw the most folks, but that is, again, not something you need to be at. We'll post the opening on the 21st, possibly, depending upon what we're able to get through tonight. We are hoping to post this on Friday. It'll be open through March 13th. That's a good length of time. Most searches are open six to eight weeks. That's seven weeks, and we think that's just about right for Stillwater area. Uh, February, February 28th at 5:30, uh, for the interview training, stakeholder report, questions, procedures. Uh, the deadline against the 13th. We'll look at them on the 14th. We want to ensure that they are complete before sharing them with you as board members, which is why there's a one-day lag. We'll make sure that everything is current, licenses are current. We'll share them with you on the 4th, 14th, and you will have all of those until March 24th. So we'll have them the 14th to 24th. You'll have them the 15th to 24th. Because on March 24th, we're meeting at 5:30 to determine the finalists. We will make recommendations for, to you of those we feel are the best candidates that align with your leadership profile. And yet you, as the board, will choose who you would like to bring forth as finalists. We'll simply recommend them. Your interviews will occur round one, 28th and 29th of March at 5:30 both days. You will conduct round two interviews on April 7th at 5:30 PM. In the interim, we'll do background checks. On the finalists, you'll be interviewing in round two. Also, some due diligence, uh, reference checking done by member, a member of the board. And then on April 8th, the day after round two interviews, you begin negotiations with your selected finalists. And April 14th, at a regular meeting at 6:30, you will approve an employment contract. Does that match your notes?
It does.
Ask my question. So what happens, so, so we make our decision, um, what happens if we find stuff in the background checks? Like, what, what do we do with it?
We will talk with you about that at the time.
Okay.
Correct. You will have options, because you will have more than one finalist. And that's one of the reasons we recommend not only bringing two people to the final interview. If you have two finalists in round two, one may drop out for their own reasons, and you're left with one person to interview in round two. Or you may uncover something in the background check that gives you pause on one of the final three that you're interviewing, and so you still have two. So we'll cross that bridge when we come to it, if that occurs. Okay, thank you very much. The timeline is the biggest thing to get through tonight. So I'll update that, and I will send it to Joan, and she'll share it with the full board and place it on the website. So thank you for your time on that. Vacancy brochure, we want to visit about as well. I want to thank the folks within the district office that sent me information for this brochure. Uh, we always want other sets of eyes on it, however, and so I wanted you to take a look at what we have in here. I've had some conversations with Alison about adding some other thoughts, but this is what the brochure will look like. I will embed the timeline in here, now that you've solidified the dates of interviews and so on and so forth. And your hiring criteria on the back page will also come out of the survey link that you all received. And thanks to those of you who were able to go in and identify your hiring criteria, those go right here in the leadership profile. But otherwise, this is the vacancy brochure that we will hopefully post on Friday. But I want to turn it back over to Alison to talk about any suggestions or additions or edits you want to make to the brochure before we post it.
The one thing that I noticed right off the bat that was missing was just the recently passed levies that we probably want to have that highlighted in there. You know, other things, I just, I thought, I just want to open it up to discussion, to be honest, and get your thoughts. I thought, you know, do we, and Krista, feel free to chime in, too. Is it worthwhile to share every community? It takes up a lot of real estate to, you know, list every single community in Stillwater area, public schools. Is that how we, it was just a question. Do we want to use that much real estate to share all the community names? Or do we have other ideas that we want to, other information that we would want to share? That was just one thought I had. Then I didn't know, you know, we talk about the gifted and talented. We, we didn't really talk about ALC. Do we want to mention the Alternative Learning Center? Is that something to include? Because it's, it's unique to Stillwater. Not every district has an, an ALC. That was another thought I had. I think we already talked about changing full-time central office staff to leadership team. That was, that's what they were trying to get at there, the actual core leadership team, not the number of employees. And then I was just kind of going down on the bullet points under Stillwater. You know, I don't know, do we want to do Stillwater? Do we want to do Washington County? I know Washington County, for example, is like in the top five counties in the state to live in. Do we want to include that? There's tons of, you know, trails, and do we want to highlight more of the county? I mean, certainly, we could hire, um, highlight some of Stillwater. I know they are, it's like a, I went on their website, and they have new, um, bullet points on their, like, foodie town, best foodie town. Or, I mean, it was just kind of some more updated 2020, 2021 awards that they had. I just thought, I don't know, do we want to have the antiquing, for example? I mean, I don't know that we want to keep adding bullet points, but were there, was there anything that way?
I guess something I think seems, like, a lot of our district is in Woodbury. Like, I, we don't say anything, like, Woodbury has a lot of things, too. I mean, the other places in the district are small, right? All of the little tiny towns, but Woodbury's really big and known.
Yeah, I, thank you for sharing that.
Yeah. I mean, it's okay if you don't want to, I'm just saying.
Right.
It seems like Woodbury's a place a lot of people like to live. It's a very popular suburb. It has a ton of shopping. I, I don't know, I mean...
I, I like, I like mentioning all areas of the community. I think it's actually rather interesting to somebody looking for this town, because it's very diverse in makeup. And, and Woodbury's, you know...
Part of it.
Part of that, and, and, and so is all the way up to Marine is part of that. And so I think it's actually, you know, pretty beneficial to acknowledge everything. Um, and, and what I do like about Stillwater, um, in, in kind of keeping it there, is that it is the first school district. And this is, there's so much history around, um, that aspect of, of the town versus Washington County is, to me, kind of more, it just seems more generic and not special, as in such, I mean, when Stillwater comes with that, that rich history, educational history.
Katie?
Um, I actually have a question for John on this. What kind of is a good way to approach this? Do we really want to focus on kind of one piece? I mean, we have a lot of communities that make up this district. What's kind of your advice or your thoughts on maybe the strategy of trying to attract people to, um, take a look at our district? Is there?
I think the candidates are going to want to know it. It's a consideration, because there's a lot of municipal work that you're going to have to do with a lot of, excuse me, a lot of different, a lot of different groups. I also think you, you either mention them all, or you, or you run the risk of, of offending somebody in your community. So I, I think, I think it's encompass, it's, it's encapsulated in that first paragraph, right?[1707.98] And you're good with that? Yeah, I think that's, and Woodbury's, they're all there.
I was thinking also about, maybe it's in here, I'm not seeing it, the mix of, you know, the dense Woodbury-type development and the rural northern part of the district. I think that's one of our uniqueness is, it's such a difference there, just to get that in there. But we're running out of room with all the cities in there. Anyway, I just, go ahead.
Barb?
So just, I had just a couple of thoughts, just when we're talking about in the first part of it, just sort of talking about the good points of our district. Maybe we want to talk about the fact that we're now going to be having a one-to-one laptop or one-to-one device program. That might be something that a potential superintendent would be interested in. I also was wondering if we wanted to talk about the fact that we actually have a certain amount of growth in our district. I know that, you know, like in the south part of the district, there's just a lot of housing that's being built. And in a lot of districts these days, they're dealing with contraction. And so I just wonder if that would be something that would set us apart a little bit. And then the other question I had is that, do you ever put any photos in? I mean, because, I mean, we have some great photos that show, I mean, if we showed the, we have some beautiful photos of the lift bridge and just the area. I mean, we have a beautiful area here, a really beautiful area. And so can we put a photo on this that would sort of highlight that, or is that just not done?
No, you can do whatever you'd like. We have done a brochure with Southeastern Minnesota with the Bluffs. There was one photo they replaced about the communities. That whole first paragraph was a picture of the Bluffs, so they placed it there. I think what people have trouble doing is eliminating things to make room for pictures because there's so much that's great about their district. So it's always a matter of prioritizing. And keep in mind the purpose of the brochure. No one's going to decide to apply or not apply because of the vacancy brochure. The purpose of this is to pique their interest and make them want to look in further to the opportunity. So they'll go to your district website, they'll go to MDE's website, they'll talk to their peers and colleagues, as John has said. This will pique interest in that alone. So it's not something that I want you to spend too long wordsmithing and miss getting it posted on Friday because there's a lot of great stuff. And a lot of people already know this is opening up. John's getting some calls. So this brochure is helpful, I think mostly for people who don't know anything about the Stillwater area public school district. And so then it's good overview. But that's its purpose. It's one tool in the toolbox.
It would be good, I think, if we can find a way to, to your point, talk about development.
Yes.
Because that's going to tell a candidate that my enrollment's going to go up, not the other direction, which that's a good financial situation to have. Good candidates are going to know it anyway, but somehow work it in here, Barb, maybe we could take a look.
Okay.
Did anyone have any thoughts on, like, I just, I felt like I just noticed ALC being missing on that list. Does anyone have any thoughts on, I just think that's a unique to Stillwater program. But.
Is it unique? I mean.
It is in the fact that we do it, you know, within our district. Most people.
Yeah, it's not, it doesn't happen in every district.
All right.
And there's just something when we talk about gifted and talented, and I just feel like if we're mentioning one program, I mean, I know transitions, for example, that's state mandated. Any superintendent's going to expect a transitions program wherever they go, but not necessarily ALC or a gifted and talented.
Or dual immersion for that matter.
Or, right, but both are mentioned in ALC.
I agree with you, Allison.
Okay.
I think that'd be a good one to add.
Okay. I agree.
I would also like to add something about the levies and mention that we do have a pack.
Yeah, I wrote that.
Yeah, the tech levy as well.
Might have to reduce your font.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sorry, Vivian has a question. I think, I mean, it's just my opinion, but I think we could take off the last two America's prettiest painted places in most romantic cities because I think the other ones kind of cover enough.
Well, and I did go on their website, and there's some other ones that I think that, if Carissa, you want to maybe go out there, and I can even show you the screenshot, there's some other ones that Stillwater has. I do like the idea, I don't, I mean, we have such a diverse school community, and it is a part of Washington County. There is that, you know, Washington County is like in the top five places to live in the state, of all the counties in the state. I do think that that's something that would warrant a bullet point here, not that the others don't as well, but, you know, more broadly, that is an outdoor, I mean, when you go onto the Washington County website, it's, you know, one of the best places to live, all the trails, all the outdoor activities. It kind of falls in line with the bullet points here that we have for Stillwater.
You could replace America's prettiest painted place with Washington County top four counties to live in Minnesota.
I don't even know what that means.
I know, painted places.
I don't know, I'm like, whatever, painted places, okay.
I think adding something about Washington County might do well to serve, if we're going to mention all these other.
Right.
Cities, towns that are in our district, to have some, something beyond, as an attraction point.
And I would trust, I think that Carissa could maybe look at that bullet point list. Like I said, I went on there, and there was a couple, an award from 2020 and 2021 on Stillwater's, the city of Stillwater's website that were actually kind of cool, that I thought were, you know, antiquing might not be as big, I don't know. Painted places, so, great.
And also, when this was returned to us, Carissa had highlighted hyperlinks to the embedded links, for instance, the social and emotional learning, Spanish immersion, the gifted and talented. You can click on that in the brochure, and it'll take you to that program. Stillwater will take you to there. So those for sure will be in there, so you'll have some light blue hyperlinks in here that, when it's online anyway, when it's hard copied, obviously they can't, but when it's online, someone could click on those links and go somewhere. So how would you like to proceed? Who would like to take charge of wordsmithing this? Or do you want John and I to take a crack at it? I'd feel better if you did it because you know your community and you know your district better than we do. And I don't want to eliminate things to make room for other things. That's not my call, so.
Right.
Carissa?
Because we all turn around.
If you're comfortable with that, I did take notes, so I think I captured most of what you were talking about, so I can try to make some of the changes and pass it to Allison and to Barb.
Okay, perfect.
Okay.
Do you need me to send it to you and publisher then?
That would be great.
Okay.
Thank you.
You bet.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Great.
All right, great, thank you. So that is the first comment draft language. And then hiring criteria, as I mentioned, once all seven of you have taken that survey, I will plug those in there. It's up to you if you want to wordsmith those at all, but these are the ones that you saw on that survey. Some districts, not very many, choose to reword the hiring criteria so it sounds more like them. You are also welcome to do that. So Carissa, once I plug in the hiring criteria, perhaps you, you're welcome to change them if you want to, so it reflects Stillwater more. You can personalize it.
So you'll send that to Joan and Carissa and myself?
Correct, yep, yep. But it will be the majority vote of the board, whatever got the most, four, five, six, seven votes, that's what will go on the back page. So the other thing you need to include in here is conversation around salary. So if you want to take a look at the salary verbiage page, salary language options, I'd like you to look at those four options and see if there is one that appeals to you more than the others to go in the brochure.
Are we to choose one of these four?
We would suggest you choose one of these four, and there are pros and cons to each, and I can tell you briefly what those are.
Yeah, I would love to.
That would be helpful.
Yeah.
The first one states the facts of what the current superintendent's contract is, just factual, and that's public information, anyone could get it. Most districts go with that one because it gives some context around what the current person's being paid. It doesn't say how many years of experience they have and so on and so forth, but that's one way of doing it. The next one is to have a minimum salary of, a floor, the lowest you would go. We have had some districts negotiate, or think that they could get someone for less than they will, so they put the floor too low, and there's candidates that won't apply because they think, oh, the most they're going to come up is $10,000 or $20,000, I'm not even interested. So putting that floor too low can hurt you. The next one, the salary range, boxes you in. If you put a low and a high range, you don't know who you're going to have for candidates. And if you have a candidate that is absolutely beyond believable, but you can't offer more than what you said you were going to offer, you could, but it shows bad faith that you stated something, then you offered something outside of that range. So that boxes you in a lot. And then the last one, some districts do that when they don't quite know what to say. And you can certainly do that. It's purposefully vague, and the only challenge with that is it leaves it open to interpretation. Someone might think, my experience and qualifications are such that I'm going to be brought in at $260,000. You just, you don't know what people are thinking when you say commensurate on that. So that's wide open to interpretation. We wouldn't want you to find a candidate that you have fallen in love with in the applications and in the interview process, and then come to negotiations and find out your $40,000 or $50,000 apart in expectations. Not that that is going to happen, it simply can if it's too vague. So knowing that about each of those, this is your call. What would you like to go in the brochure?
I think for me, the first one is ideal.
Same.
I'd vote the first one, too.
Yep, first.
My only concern with the first one is just that we have sort of a special circumstance right now, in the sense that we have an interim superintendent and, who didn't, you know, just because of the circumstances, did not go through the usual process. And I think that because of the unusual circumstances, that her compensation reflects that. And so that might not be very, all those nuances would not be apparent to superintendents. And if you look at what, you know, the schedule is for other superintendents in our area, it's rather low. And I just don't know what sort of an impact that would have on candidates. Would they, not knowing those circumstances, would they think that we just don't pay very much? That would be my concern.
I actually had that same concern, so that's.
It's public information anyways, they're going to look it up and see it, right? Is it, are they listed farther back than the previous? I can't recall.
You could certainly do a contract year 2019, 20, 2021, or the last three contracts were.
For their searching, are they able to search farther back?
Oh, yes.
Or do they just, okay, so it's all there.
HR, I would say they could find out superintendent contracts historically, couldn't they?
Yeah, they're not on our website, but.
But they could ask for them and receive them?
I think, oh, sorry. I think it might be nice to just put what the last regularly hired superintendent's salary was, rather than the, if it's, if it's different, if it's significantly different, then I think we should put that because that's really what we're willing to pay because we were paying it, it's just because of this unusual situation that we have a different salary.
What was the last superintendent paid?
I'm just getting ready to look at it.
I'm looking at it right now. And Cindy, you might know right off.
I feel like at the last year of employment, it was $195,826.
Yeah, that's a big difference between.
I could look that up, but I didn't remember.
Yeah. And so that's a big difference from what the current, and so that's the nuance that I think would be perhaps misconstrued out there. I'm just concerned about that.
I would, that's, I think, a valid concern. I worked for a long time, but I made more than all but two people on this list, and I was sitting in an assistant super role. So you just don't want to get into that, wow, I mean, a $15,000 cut, that kind of thing, because that gets to be pretty significant. Because as I said, when we presented, I am getting calls, and this is a desirable district. So my only caveat would be, because it's your decision, would be, you don't want to lose a candidate by being too low. So that makes some sense, because that would be in the market.
What year was that number, the 195? What contract year?
19?
That's what I'm feeling, like, I just want to make sure.
I think it was 19.
I want to say it was 2021.
2021.
So one suggestion might be to say, the superintendent's base salary for the 2020, 2021 school year was $195,826,000. The final salary will be negotiated commensurate with experience. I hesitate to get into words like, I don't know what the right word would be.
We presently have a.
Most recent regular, or, I mean, it's just that interim, regular.
Yeah.
That's kind of awkward. So if you simply state the year, a lot of people will just glance over 2021 and go right to the number and not analyze it that it was a year and a half ago. I mean, they may not even notice that. They are looking for the dollar amount you paid, what most people would say is your regular superintendent rate. I just wouldn't use that language in the description. So that's an option for you.
I like that option. I think that it represents what, historically, we have been willing to pay in this district, having gone through the regular superintendent search process. And again, we have some special circumstances right now, and I just think it would be misleading to use the current amount.
Does anyone have a different opinion?
I agree, Barb.
I agree, too.
Yeah, it helps to have the context a little bit more of the difference in salary.
Yes, I agree, the context is important, right.
So thank you for sharing that. I still like one.
So on that page of the brochure, because they will look for this, you know, there are certain things they're looking for on here, and one is the salary, one is the timeline, one is the financial highlights, one's the mission, and then the points of pride. But the superintendent's base salary for the 2020, 2021 school year was 195,826. The final salary will be negotiated commensurate with experience and qualifications. The contract length is negotiable as provided in Minnesota statute. You're all good with that?
And can I just, I always want to, I have a couple people here that we have intentionally here to get their opinion, so, Cindy, because you are ultimately negotiating this and working on behalf of the district, how do you feel about that?
I think that's good wording. It's as accurate as it can be, given the unique circumstances, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. That is all I have for the brochure, and I'd like to move on to stakeholder input, if we're good. All right. So the next thing in the pack you'll see is the survey. So we'll start with this. This is the standard superintendent search survey that we use for all of the searches that we conducted MSBA. It's a combination of quantitative and qualitative data. So the quantitative is what we always say, number crunching, forcing people to pick their top six, or yes or no, that sort of thing. And then we weave in the open-ended questions, which is the qualitative side or the anecdotal side of a survey. This is what we mentioned in our presentation we did during the pandemic, when focus groups were no longer viable to do in person, and doing the focus groups online was simply not providing us with the information we needed. We drove people to the survey directly, aggressively, and we got much better response rates and much more transparency because it was anonymous, and they could do it 24/7 during that two-week period. So this is the survey that we would recommend for you. You can let me know if you have questions, and we also would like to know about the possibility of other languages and providing it online and in hard copy in languages in addition to English.
And when I had spoke to Barb, I said, I kind of had thrown it out there that Spanish would be of interest, and I talked to Carissa, too, and then Somali, and then Carissa had suggested also Hmong would be some, three good languages to start out with.
Yeah, extra languages. English, too, I.
And Barb was quick to point out that on the Somali and the Hmong options, it's an auto-translate. So if someone's really fluent in the language, they're probably going to say, you know, that's not exactly accurate or correct. But it's something we haven't done as a district before, and I would, I'm personally curious how many people would take advantage of that. I think it could give us some information as well. And it's, to me, we all want this to be a very inclusive process, so.
Right. Would the survey, if we did do different languages, would part of the, like, presentation back to the board, survey results include if the survey was taken in other languages, or is that?
We would tell you how many surveys were taken in each of the languages.
Okay.
Even in districts that have real diverse stakeholder groups, the vast majority, 95% or more, will take the English survey.
Okay.
And yet, offering them, I think, is a very nice service. That, my only concern would be if there are translators within the district for Hmong or Somali, I would prefer that they translate it and give it to us, and we copy and paste so we're not relying on Google Translate or Survey Monkey's translation survey because they're really not that good. Not that any of you might work for those services, but people who are fluent in those languages would read the survey and go. But we will certainly do it that way if there aren't translators that could potentially help us with that. Okay.
Potentially Somali, we might be able to have somebody help, but if we don't have a translator, we just would have to rely on, okay, someone that works with one of our
someone that works with one of our programs.
Okay. We already have the Spanish survey that's been translated by someone who's fluent, so we aren't using Google Translate for that. That's done. We don't have it in Somali or Hmong.
I can probably find someone who's Hmong. I can ask someone.
For Somali?
Hmong.
Hmong, okay. Then my only question would be, in order to get that up and running and ready to make live on Friday, that's a pretty quick turnaround time for asking people to help with that. So would you be okay moving the survey back until next week? Having it go live next week instead of on the 21st? I want to give, if people are assisting us, potentially with Somali through the district, potentially with Hmong through Vivian, I want to give them enough time, so we're not asking them to return it to us by Thursday night. That's really quick this week.
I'm just looking at what that does to the timeline, or?
It doesn't do much, because we could still do our virtual Q and A session on February 1st. And instead of having the survey go live on the 21st, we could have it go live on the 27th or 28th and close on February 10th or 11th.
I, I want to be as inclusive as possible. I'm also here, I want as much time as possible on the survey. I don't know where everyone else is at. I mean, I hate to shorten the window or push.
But we still have it for two weeks.
You'd still have it.
We usually recommend a two-week window, no matter what. If we have it longer than that, people delay it and think, oh, I'll fill it out, and then they just don't do it.
So there is two weeks, okay.
I, I actually kind of like the slightly later, because then if you've got the virtual Q and A session and it will have just gone live right before it, there'll still be plenty of time for people to fill it out. If that, I don't know if you make a plug for that during that session or not.
Absolutely. Yeah, we plug heavily for the survey during the Q and A session.
Okay.
Are people okay if the survey goes live on the 27th, maybe, Thursday, the 27th? And it's open until Thursday, February 10th? Changes the timeline slightly, okay? So the stakeholder online survey opened January 27th through February 10th. The Q and A is February 1st, to allow people still enough time to fill that out. And if I could get your contact information to work with, to perhaps have someone help us translate it.
I'm asking her if she's willing first, yeah.
Okay, that'd be great. And then I'll talk to Chris, Carissa, about Somali. Wonderful. We will do that, and we'll have it in four languages. So that gives us a little bit more time to launch the survey. Thank you very much. Any questions on this survey? Well, also, again, as I mentioned, have it in hard copy in all four languages for ADA requirements, so that it'll be at the district office. Anyone can walk in and take it, if they either can't or don't want to use a computer to take the survey.
My, my only question, and it's more internal, is have we thought, I want, obviously, we all want as many people as possible to engage in this. What are the, how do we get it out to our, to our community? I know we do newsletters via email, and I know we do other things, but are there untradi, you know, maybe untraditional ways that we could get out?
I would use all of our communication vehicles. So we would put it in all of the school newsletters, the district newsletter. We'd put it out on the website. We might even think about doing a Facebook post or advertising on Facebook for people to participate. We can promote it through other activities and events that are going on. I think you talk about it here at school board meetings. I think there's plenty of ways for us to get the news out. And from past experience, this is usually something people have a lot of thoughts on. So I expect we will get a good response on this kind of a survey.
And I know there might be professional organizations that we could all network with and, you know, that we, we have membership in, and, okay.
Do people put their names on the survey? Is there any risk of ballot stuffing, anything like that? Somebody's just going to grab 25 of them and drop them all?
That's possible.
Okay.
With the online survey, it recognizes IP addresses, so if you've taken it once from your Gmail account, you can't take it again. So it's by email address that one person per email address can take it. Hard copies, on your honor, that people fill it out once, submit it that way. It's a, it's a process where you trust people who are filling it out. You also trust that you don't have people from Wisconsin filling it out or from California filling it out, because it's accessible to everyone on your website. Most people will come from your communities, though.
So anybody watching this meeting right now that was not a suggestion?
Way to go, Pete. No, just kidding.
Jim, that's not a suggestion.
I don't know if that's ever happened, but it's a legitimate concern when you do a survey. It's not a highly regulated, controlled process, so it can happen. I don't think I've ever seen it happen. We did have one special interest group in a community that had a lot of people rally to fill it out and share their concerns and their thoughts. And that's totally great. We want to hear from as many people as we can. We'll provide a summary to you of all those high-level trends and representative comments, so you know what people are saying. We do want input, any and all input we can possibly get. And as far as the communities that aren't speaking English, we'd also want to come up with some creative ways to get the word into those communities, folks that they trust, that speak their language, that want them to fill it out. We'd love to help with that if we could. Hard copy surveys going into apartment complexes or community centers, newsletters within those communities that could put a link to the survey in their newsletters, all of that would be fabulous, so.
Great.
Any other questions on the survey?
I have one. Do you have an idea of how many surveys you would expect us to get back? Like, what kind of feedback are we looking for here?
We have an average number, don't we?
12% of your student population, so sometimes more, sometimes less, but that's the average.
So you have about 8,500 students? That's 8,500 times point 12, approximately. And this is an average, so there's always more and there's always less. 500, maybe? I can't do mental math. That would see what we might expect on an average. I know I have a calculator. I will tell you, though, that it doesn't always indicate, we had, we had a district once that was really disappointed. Based on this average, 12% average, they thought they'd get about 600 responses, and they got 200 responses. So they were very disappointed at first, and yet, what turned out is people were very pleased with what the school board was doing in the district, completely trusted the board to do what was right in terms of the superintendent's search, didn't feel it was necessary to provide feedback, because they really truly felt the board had it in hand. So a low response rate doesn't mean lack of support for the district or interest in the search. Sometimes it means complete confidence in what you're doing. Sometimes we get a really high rate of response, and it might be because there is something very divisive happening in the moment at the community, whether it's a referendum or a building project. People at the, the polls tend to respond to the survey the most, but that majority middle oftentimes don't because they're very content with what is occurring within the school district. Not always, but you can't read too much into it. And yet, average, we see about 12% of your student population number as the response rate, so.
But you'll, you'll need to, maybe you talked about this, but we'll have raw data from the survey. If we share it with you, then that could be subject to a data practices request. We'll definitely summarize the data. So that's something you'll have to decide as a group, what you want to do with that. And that's really the differentiation, is if it stays with us, we believe that it's not subject to a member of the community getting it. We do know if we provide it to you, you, you would have to provide the raw data. So just to think about.
And there's a lot of redacting that does need to occur sometimes in those responses. And so when we summarize data, we're looking for trends, positive and negative feedback. We don't just tell you all the great stuff. We will tell you the trends where people are concerned about superintendent search this way, that way, another way. We'll always summarize that for you. We'll always provide quotes in there to support that trending. And it saves you from sifting through 80 pages of data. It also saves you from potentially some redacting costs, should there be a request for it at a later point. But you let us know what you'd like to do when we get to that stage, okay?
Do they also check off whether they are a parent, a student, or staff even?
Yes, yes.
One comment that I had, and this is again more for probably Carissa, but when we send it out, I'd like to make sure that our students are aware of how, you know, that they can participate, especially our secondary students. I mean, there might even be some middle school students who would be interested in, in filling something like this out, and certainly high school as well, so.
Would love to hear from students.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
We can share it out with high school. I think you also have the benefit of having two student reps on your school board here who are very active and involved in the school, so utilizing them to share that with their classmates would be a great idea, too.
Yes.
One of the most rewarding, I'll tell you a mission moment just for a minute, but one of the most rewarding sets of input I ever got was at a district where, when we were able to do focus groups before the pandemic, we would go into the schools and do focus groups with students. And so we don't pick them. We always ask the district to invite or select students that can participate for an hour in a focus group. And we meet with the first group of students, phenomenal input. Every single one of them were the college-bound, high achiever, honor roll students. And so in speaking with the board chair that was helping us set this up, we said, that was a really interesting group. Can we meet with another group of students? You have leaders in this school that are not the traditional leaders. And so we ended up with a second group of students that brought me to tears with some of the things they said about the community, about the school district, about what they look for, what they want in a leader, and it was the non-traditional leaders, kids that were not college-bound or were not on the honor roll, and it was absolutely goosebump-inducing to hear them speak. So it was nice to get the spectrum of students of all voices, and that'll be really important, of course, with this as well. So any way we can get that feedback, we want that.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, that was a great memory. I almost cried thinking about it because it was so great. All right, so finalist interviews, I do want to touch on stakeholder input for a moment to give you something to think about. You don't have to decide tonight, but stakeholders are involved right now, beginning on January 27th, with the stakeholder survey being open for two weeks in four languages. You may also consider finalists being involved in the second round of interviews. This will be entirely up to you. Most boards wait to see what comes in on the stakeholder report, so that you can see on February 28th what sort of feedback you got, how loud those voices came through with their opinions, thoughts, what the patterns and trends were. At that point, you'll want to decide whether and how you want stakeholder input during the interviews themselves. And I think I mentioned in the presentation, there's three ways districts do it. Boards choose to use a stakeholder survey as the source of stakeholder input, and you do your interviews as a board, and you're confident in your decisions, you have the voices in your head from that survey. Another choice would be to set up round robin interviews, where you have interview committees that are interviewing candidates on the same day that you're interviewing them. So that would be April 7th, where they might meet with a group in the morning, and then a group in the afternoon, and then the board in the evening. You could do that, round robin. Who serves on those hiring, or interview committees, pardon me, is really important, how they are selected, and the questions they ask. Back to your point, Vivian, about training, that they are not asking questions in a free-for-all forum because they might be asking things they cannot ask legally in making their decisions. The third way is a compromise between the two, where selected stakeholder groups send a representative to observe your interviews and provide feedback through an online forum about the strengths and opportunities for growth of each candidate. So it's individual feedback electronic that will summarize for you during deliberations. Usually, the interview committees are committee feedback as a whole, and they come to you with recommendations and thoughts on their interviews with those folks. Three different ways, and you can decide what best fits still what our area. We've done all of them, so.
Yeah, and I know we don't need to make this decision tonight, but I'm just hearing you talk about this a couple of times and reading the presentations. I like the third option, where they're watching the interviews and giving us feedback. I just think it keeps the roles. I think it might have been Tina who was saying, you know, it's kind of those expectations of who's making the hiring decisions. Sometimes when they're in there and they're conducting their own interviews, I get, I don't want people to feel disappointed if they like someone and that's not the selected candidate. I want to keep the excitement and the energy, and I think that last option, for me at least, it involves the community in a significant way, but in an appropriate way. But I, I'm open to other people.
I actually have a question about the input forums. When we select those individuals, are they speaking, like, as a representative of a group? Were they expected to have input from their group while they are participating? Or is it more, they just are making the decision in the spot?
Great question. Ideally, they would be representing that group through their own lens as an individual. So for instance, you would not, as a board, ever want to select who serves on that observation committee or input forum. You would extend invitations to the bargaining units, to the community chamber of commerce, to the PTA. And you would ask them to send one representative to observe, and they would send whoever they feel could speak for them in terms of the feedback on the candidates. Does that help?
Yeah.
And you don't want more than maybe 15 people observing your interviews. More than that, it becomes chaotic when we try to summarize the data for you. Or again, we could give you the raw data and the raw feedback, so.
Tina?
I'm, I might have an unpopular opinion tonight, but I've been at this a little while, and the community's, you know, has a lot of divisions still. I personally do not trust the way committees are formed within this community and within the school district. And so I would love to have community representation. However, I don't trust that they are even keeled community representation, and so I struggle there. Because of those reasons, I, I, I just opt for the, the survey, because that way, you know, biases are kept out of the scenario. And that is, that's just my concern, that, that not all areas of the community are always equally represented, and there, if, if they start, or if they're chosen many times, they just give up and quit if they're a minority in that, and their, their voices get overpowered, and then they just go away. So that is, that's a huge concern for me with things that have happened over the last five, six years.
Thank you. Anyone else have any thoughts? Vivian?
I would like the third option, but I think it would be very important for people to, to identify themselves if they're going to be, like, putting an input about the actual interviews, because then we know that it's people who are in the community and not random people who are listening.
You would invite, you would identify in advance the groups you want to be there, and then you would invite them to send someone. And we would need their email addresses and their names in advance, because we would want to communicate with them the expectations of, you have to be at every interview. They can't simply attend one or two and provide feedback. They need to be at all three, if you have three. And they need to fill out this form, and it is electronic within 15 minutes of the conclusion of that interview. And I would send them the link to practice, so they can get used to using, it's called an audience input form. So we would know who they are in advance, and you could choose, if you want to, to publish those names. That's a board decision as well. I think to Tina's point, that's the exact reason many boards have decided to just use the survey, to avoid any sense of bias within people who are selected by the stakeholder group to attend. That can happen as well. So I think you summed it up really nicely, why some boards are foregoing the opportunity for interview committees or for people to observe your interviews. But think about it, because it's something that I think, and it'll make more sense when you see the summary. You'll see how thorough and how broad and deep these results are, and if it's as deep or broad as you might have hoped, perhaps you forego anyone observing your interviews, or you feel we still want to do that, and here's why. So that'll be a decision we'll talk about and make on February 28th. Is everybody okay with that?
Yep.
Great, thank you. So we're coming to the end of the agenda for tonight. Thanks for hanging in there. I did want to address the role of the current superintendent just for a moment, because this is something, again, clear expectations from the beginning are real important to us. Typically, a sitting superintendent is not involved in the superintendent's search process at all, whether they are retiring, or have another job, or are serving as an interim, or have a contract up for renewal. Sitting supes generally are not a part of this process. And so I wanted to confirm that with the board. Unless you had another view of it and wanted your current superintendent involved to some degree, I'd want to make sure I knew that, and respect the choice of the board. So any thoughts on that?
I agree.
What you said.
Yep.
Okay, all right. 99.9%, that's how it is. So I just wanted to make sure that we're all on the same page. Similarly, school board spokesperson, we would like you to speak with one voice surrounding the superintendent's search. If the media contacts you as a member of the board, who would you direct them to in terms of commenting? It is almost always the board chair, but it doesn't have to be. So who would you like the spokesperson to be on your behalf during the search process?
The chair.
And then I would always go, we have a communications group that we would defer to, too, as well.
Okay, yes, okay. In-district contact persons, I have already worked a lot with Joan. Thank you very much. I can tell it's going to be a pleasure. She's a wonderful resource internally for us, so thank you. I'm going to assume she's still a point person for me? Great. And do you want me to have access to and connect directly with Carissa and/or Cindy? Is that okay with them? If that's something that is easier to go directly through MSBA versus through the board, or always through Joan?
I guess, does anyone have any strong opinions?
Whatever's easiest.
Yeah, whatever's easiest. You know, I think that Joan should be copied on everything. You know, if it's in a written communication, so she's kind of, because she is the hub. And she's really good at it, so we want to keep her in there for everything.
Always CC Joan.
Yes.
And I always CC the chair also, just so the board's ears and eyes are on the emails going amongst staff and MSBA. Good plan?
Yeah.
All right, great, thank you. Search agreement. I did want to revisit the proposal, and I've highlighted in the following pages in red font the things that I just want to make sure I reflect in the search agreement accurately. The first one I want to talk about is focus groups. It was on page three in the proposal. At the bottom of that page, you'll notice that we are more than happy to conduct those focus groups early in the process. The fee is here in red. If you would like us to do that, we will certainly do so. So how do you feel about focus groups as something that runs concurrently with the survey? Or would you prefer to pass? It's completely up to you.
I would prefer to pass, but does anyone have a different opinion than that, or?
Okay.
We will pass.
All right, so I'm looking for yes/no answers. So we're no on the focus groups. What about the in-district meetings? If you look at the next page, on page nine, in red, we are here tonight in person, and we are here in person for both nights of round one interviews, and we're here for round two in person. The intervening, intermediate meetings, intervening meetings? You'll see on February 28th and March, oh, excuse me, and March 24th, we would be joining you virtually. Are you okay with that? Or would you prefer we be here in person? We're happy to. We simply charge an extra fee for time and mileage.
So that would be the interview training?
Yes.
And?
Determining the finalists.
And determining the finalists. Discussion on that?
I'm sorry, how, how long of a time on that particular day?
Both of those meetings run about two hours, on average.
I'm fine virtually.
You're fine virtually?
I think it might be useful to have someone here when you're determining the finalists, but maybe not. I guess virtual's fine with me, too.
Okay. Other opinions?
Would that just be MSBA virtual, or would it be if everyone would be?
Just MSBA. You would still meet in person unless something changes with pandemic, but you would meet in person, we would join you.
Can I ask how long you've been doing it virtually like that? Has it been for a long time? Has it just been since COVID? How long have you been doing it that way?
March 18th, 2020. We were in the middle of the Hastings search, and everything was in person, and just like that, we had to go virtual. So we needed to scramble to come up with processes, because all of our work was done in person and by hard copy. Very little of our search work was done online or with electronic surveys. So we were. So we were forced, because of the pandemic, to move everything online very quickly. We learned a lot during that search. Still went very well, and since that time, I think we've refined it to be more effective. And we've simply found it can be much more efficient, and we can serve more of our members by doing virtual meetings. You know, John and I sometimes have two board meetings apiece in one night, because we're both doing them from our offices versus driving seven hours and then driving seven hours home. So we've learned a lot from it. We've been doing it since the middle of March 2020. I remember that day so clearly.
So this would be sort of a hybrid situation, though, because we would be in person, and then you would be virtual, and that works as well as all in person or all virtual?
Yes, it has, it has. And in your case, I have to compliment you and your tech team on how you are set up. The audio is so good for people who are joining virtually. It is a challenge sometimes, and John and I have both done it, where their audio's not good, or the camera's only on one board member for the whole meeting. Doesn't work as well, because we can't see your facial expressions, but your setup is absolutely phenomenal. I can't see an issue, can you?
No, I did want to point out that we will do everything with Stillwater together, except I have another, the interview preparation, I have another district I have to do the same thing with that night, otherwise it'll be the both of us. But no, it's worked really well. And it's a board preference. I mean, we will drive and then go if that's what a board desires.
I'm okay with the virtual option.
Virtual's fine with me, too.
Okay.
It's fine with me.
Great, okay.
Virtual it is.
Virtual it is. Next, national advertising on page 10. Under additional fees à la carte options, there are some national advertising sites listed. We would post the vacancy brochure on any of those that you might choose. That is at cost. We don't mark those up at all, but you can see the cost and the number of days that your position would be posted on those national sites, or any other sites that you might have identified that you'd like to be on. But those are the ones we typically see if people choose national advertising to post on.
Bringing up for our thoughts?
I'm thinking nowadays, you know, with the tech, I can't imagine somebody that might be interested not knowing that this opening exists. I mean, is that even possible? So.
I think it's a good idea to post on, especially if we want to encourage equity in our district. I think we should at least post in the National Alliance of Black School Educators and the Association of Latino Administrators and Superintendents.
I have a question. When you do these national searches, on average, how many applicants do you usually receive nationally for, I mean, I guess for, in the metro area? Is there, do you usually get a good turnout, or maybe not so much?
Most of the applications come from the Midwest, and all of those folks are checking MSBA's site or MAS A's site. We have had searches where we posted there. Got one candidate once from the East Coast, got one from Florida, did not recommend them through to the school board. Looked good on paper, did some additional research, didn't align with the hiring criteria. And so I don't think there is anything magical about an out-of-state candidate, but there are wonderful people across the entire country doing school administration. We feel that the Midwest, and especially Minnesota, have some phenomenal leaders here that already know about the position, and yet you might find someone that is looking on one of those very specific sites. And we've posted on the National Special Education website for an intermediate district and got a hit from someone nationally in special education on the West Coast. So it can happen. We just can't predict it.
We have some interests now out of state, but they all have some connection. They have family, or they grew up in, across the border, but they want to get back into a, so it's, it is rare when someone just cold, you know, targets us without some other reason for being here or a connection. But we do advertise, how many states are in the piece with the Ohio school boards that we?
Oh, NAS S has 39 members in it, and well over half use the Ravelas database.
So what states do you cover without these extra postings?
I would say the upper Midwest, and then if you look at the list, boy, I don't have it in the proposal, but there's the 39 states listed of school board associations that conduct superintendent search services, and of those, probably 15 to 20 are using Ravelas. That includes Ohio, Florida, Texas, Indiana, the Dakotas, Michigan. So it's sort of Midwest and South, Florida, I said that one. You know, not so much California, New York, those different kind of school board associations on the coasts. But I'd say the central part of the country, we'll see it through Ravelas if there's candidates looking, and they want to come to Minnesota especially. They'll look for the Minnesota postings in Ravelas, so.
So we'll get a national reach, then, just for what we have right now?
Yes.
Do you, do you work with that new, the new collaboration, or?
Which new collabora, oh, NAS B new collaboration? That is in its infancy right now. NAS S is affiliated with NSBA, and it's not going away. The National Association of Superintendent Searchers is a separate platform. We met one another through NSBA, but we are a separate organization outside of that, so that's going to continue to move on without any change or any connection to the new collaboration.
I tend to, I mean, just my opinion, I tend to, I feel like advertising for positions like this, it's more about the networking. I, the cost isn't significant, though, so I, I hear what Vivian is saying in terms of the diversity and reaching out to candidates. I just, my own professional background tells me that for a job like this, an advertisement just doesn't, you know, it's kind of a rifle approach when really we're trying to target certain, you know, target candidates who are interested within the region. But I'm flexible and open to the board's thoughts.
I'm curious that, I know, how many private schools go onto these? Do you get any applicants from private school entities that will come to the public sector?
Yes, not as many recently with the challenges in public education. I think there are people choosing perhaps to leave public education and go to private schools because of the fear overall of the public education issues right now. And yet we have, we do see applicants from charter schools applying as well.
Okay, and that's just with the standard operation you have offered?
Okay, correct. We do.
We need a decision on this one tonight.
So, Joan, Bev?
I would just say, I tend to agree with Allison. I think that people who are coming from different parts of the country are coming here for a reason, you know, like there is, you know, they grew up here and they want to come back here. And in that case, they're seeking it out. And so an advertisement in a national publication or whatever is, is not necessarily going to surface, you know, additional candidates who wouldn't come here otherwise, who wouldn't seek out that opportunity otherwise. So, but again, you know, I agree with Allison, it's not a tremendous amount of money. If board members feel as though it's a, it's a good investment, I certainly wouldn't be that opposed to it.
I guess I just want to make sure that we aren't recycling superintendents in the area that we actually have a little bit of opportunity to bring some other thoughts and, and, and thinking into the district on top of what we've seen. And I've attended many of the, you know, C meetings and many of the superintendents, and it's, you get to know all of them, and so then you just kind of see the recycling going on from one district to the other district to the other district. So it would be nice to be able to have some new opportunities as well.
I guess I would like to at least do the Black School Educators and the Latino Administrators and Superintendents personally. I just think, I know maybe it's only people who are from this area who will look, but the more people who see it, the more likely it is you'll get somebody.
Any?
Yeah, thank you. I think I agree with both Vivian and Tina. Sorry, Director Riley and.
It's fine. I didn't know this either. It's works out.
You know, I think the question is, a lot of minority applicants don't really look to Stillwater to apply, not because they don't want to, but because they know nothing about it. And I think in order for us to attract that diversity, regardless of how many, or even if they see it, because they know nothing about the place, they may not apply. But we can find ways to attract people to apply to our job, because the truth is, it's not just the superintendent position, but there are other positions that we like to attract, you know, minority applicants to come into. And I think putting the, going with both the National Alliance of Black School Educators and the Association of Latino Administrators and Superintendents, an ideal opportunity, because it may not just be that somebody may go out there and say, wow, there, you know, there's a school out there, a district out there called Stillwater Public Schools, and what else do they have? Some other types of interests. So I think it's an opportunity for us.
I guess I, I mean, I think Bev said it, too. I'm completely fine with those two. I have no objections to it. I just, it just is, in general, my thoughts on advertising, and that it's not a very targeted approach. And I think that, I certainly hope that the position draws a diverse candidate base, and I think that we need to make sure that we're going out there in other ways that are targeted to encourage that, other than just placing an ad. So I think it's probably a both and, you know, approach.
It may or may not attract a lot, but it does have some recognition. So that's another thing, too.
Right. Great.
So both of those, it will be 30 days for the National Alliance of Black School Educators for 250, and the Association of Latino Administrators and Superintendents, six weeks at 250, so $500 in additional costs that I'll add into the search agreement when I put that together. Okay, great, thank you.
And are these sites online sites, or are they publications, magazines? I'm sorry?
Online sites. Yep, yep. I also know that MAS A has done a lot of work in the last two years with, I'm not sure if they're calling them affinity groups or not, not clear of the term, but female, female leadership in superintenancies and minority candidates, persons of color in superintendent candidates, they're doing a really great job, I think, of encouraging and developing leaders that are the, I hate to say non-traditional, but MAS A is another resource we'll be working with on this search and getting the word out to people that would be interested in this opportunity, though. They're doing a great job of that, so. All right, so national advertising, yes, that will be an additional $500 then. And then the background checks, I heard you say earlier yes to that, especially on the final three, or two, or four, whatever you have in your second round. And that is $395 per candidate. So thank you for walking through that with me as well. I'll get that reflected in the search agreement. The last thing I have for you is the two pre-screening priorities. Now, when you read the questions that are in here, I don't want anyone to focus on the specific language of these questions. This is a list of 12 questions that other districts have asked over the past two years. We have about 40 of these questions. What I want you to look at is the highlighted information. When I say two pre-screening priorities, what issues are facing Stillwater area public schools right now that you would like to include in the application itself, that someone will fill out and answer around two of your biggest issues? And that way, it'll help you select them as finalists, or not select them as finalists. So very often, people will want to ask about relationship building skills. This is one way of saying that, but what are your relationship building skills, or that sort of thing? If you have a referendum coming up, that's been a real popular screening question to see if they have experience in that. Facilities, open enrollment, declining or increasing enrollment, school district finances, building an administrative team. The pandemic has cropped up as a question. They want to ask for people's thoughts on that. Strategic planning, diversity, equity questions, futuristic, if you're really driven by futuristic thinking, do you want someone who can see your own corners, that kind of thing? Curriculum background, or what is some innovative work that you've done that you're really proud of? These are simply examples, but I wanted to at least hear from you tonight, what are the two biggest things you'd like to screen for in the applications? And then we can wordsmith it to fit the application, but we'll want to post it on Friday. So maybe I would work with Carissa on wording it in a way that really reflects what it is you're trying to get at. But what areas do you want to screen?
And how many did you say?
Two.
Two. In agreement? Or two?
Two total, in agreement.
Okay.
So choose that now, you're saying?
Yes. Yes.
I think for me, I am really concerned about academic outcomes.
So which question is it? One, two, 12?
It's not. I don't know. I'm just saying. I am really concerned about ensuring that that is a goal, is to make sure that, that our students are doing better than, than we're doing, and they're having an increased academic experience here.
Would that be 11 on that one?
I don't know. I didn't read them. I just know that that's what I want.
And I appreciate that, because Tina's thinking outside the box, and these are simply sample questions.
Doesn't have to be limited to this, it's.
Should not be limited to this, right? Yeah, thanks, John. Yep.
That's helping you out.
These are the most common, that people say, well, you know, we have a referendum coming up, or, oh, gosh, we have trust issues, and so they want to ask about those things in that application. We always ask, based on the hiring criteria or the leadership profile for Stillwater area public schools, why are you the best fit for this district? They will answer that question in the application, but you have the opportunity to ask two more questions, instead of simply asking the same old, same old questions of every candidate, which used to be, share with us your understanding of school district finance and budgeting procedures. I mean, that was asked all the time in Appletrack. Or what's the most important role of a superintendent? Now, because of Ravelas, we give you the chance to tell us what you want to ask first. And some of these might be interview questions that you want to ask, but remember, you're going to be looking through, hopefully, a lot of applications, and you want a way to sift through, who do we really want to talk to as a finalist? And so this is your chance to identify those two things.
Well, think about it in the context of the hiring qualification criteria, too, because we'll tailor a draft set of questions based on those criteria, because that's what the candidates are going to look at, and how they're going to try to tailor their resume or their cover letter. So this is supplemental to that, but you get to ask it on the application. So you may want to give some thought to, what are we looking for?
So, do I want to tell you now?
Vivian, hold on one second. Bev had her hand up. Bev?
I would just say that, that my, that the two that resonate for me on this list are the one that talks about building strong relationships. I think that we have, you know, that that would be a, in this community, as we are right now, that that skill would be something that would be particularly valuable. And the other one that I think would be good is the one about sharing an initiative that you are most proud of, because I think that what that, the answer to that question gets at is, is this a creative, risk-taking leader? You know, because we're looking for someone who's, who's leading and not necessarily just managing a district, but, but leading in a creative way. And, and I do agree with, with Tina that we, you know, I'd like to ask them three questions, maybe, because, because I think that those three things, you know, and, and having them address something about, you know, how do we, what are some creative ways? I mean, you could almost combine, you know, the creativity in question 12 with, you know, and have them address it in terms of academics. But I, I do like, you know, we, we do have a challenge in this district, and so when it comes to academics, and so I just kind of like to see what they have to say about that. But, you know, I also want to get at that creativity, that creative leadership sort of piece.
Yeah, and that's why I was referencing this, because we just did, that was one of our hiring criteria, visionary, creative thinker. And then we try to tailor questions to get at, how have you demonstrated that? How do you get people to think outside the box, but at the same time, hold them accountable, that kind of thing? So the two things kind of go hand in hand, because they, they haven't given us this, right? This is the.
They've almost all completed it.
Okay, so we would have that, okay. So I, I don't know, Barb, I, a couple that I've worked with, the board chair has then submitted a couple of things after tonight to give us something to build off of, if you're, you know, it's a long night. So that, I don't know how your thoughts on that, but that's another way we've done it, where we've given a 24 hours and then.
Yep. Does anyone have?
Because you may need to think about it, I guess, this one.
Okay, Vivian?
I guess I liked 12, what Bev said, but I also like nine, but I would change it, because I do think the academically successful part is important. So I think it should say, how will you lead to ensure the diverse backgrounds of all members in our school community will be heard, included, and academically successful?
Katie?
Kind of, the ones that I'm finding myself attracted to are actually the numbers seven and ten, that I feel like they could be merged into one, and looking at the future of education and kind of recognizing how the pandemic has shifted things. Um, and it definitely would then tie back into academics as well, in recognizing and in analyzing kind of where those gaps are and where we're going to have to think creatively in addressing those gaps. Um, so somewhere between those two. Um, and then the other big thing on my radar is a referendum, possibly, um, two and three combined, um, with managing school facilities. We have a lot of growth in this district. We have to figure out where to put kids. Um, we've already done some boundary changes, but there's been talk for a while of a bond upcoming, um, and if, I would like to know if somebody's had some experience, um, with passing a bond or creating a plan for a bond, um, or managing facilities in a very long, skinny district like ours.
Annie?
Thank you. Um, so I think for me, number nine is also very important, um, but I'm actually aligning that to the achievement gap. Um, that's a huge part, because the district has had issues with, um, achievement gap when it comes to, um, uh, just the diverse populations and the diverse, diverse, um, activities that we have. Um, so someone ought to actually come in and help bridge that gap. And, um, so the district at least continues to have that excellence in terms of its learning, because if you have the top, you have a couple at the bottom, it brings you to the middle, doesn't take you anywhere. But correcting that is very important for me, and somebody who has the vision to be able to see how to, to, to correct all of those kinds of things. Number eleven is also very important to me in terms of enhanced curriculum. My idea here is, um, in terms of competition, I'm always thinking about the schools that are around us, so you want to start from home. And, um, I think enhancing, um, the curriculum that we have and looking at other ways in terms of, um, uh, being innovative, uh, and creating all sorts of programs, not just academic programs, but programs that makes the student a whole being. Uh, so someone who could truly see that vision and look beyond just the academic piece, uh, but that can build a well-rounded program that enhances the abilities of all students within our district, so that's what I'm looking for.
Vivian?
Yep, and I, um, you know, I like all of them, so I'm kind of narrowing it down. Then I see the number ten kind of would cover those things that I might have scratched. So the future of education can cover what a lot of us are already, uh, talking there. And, uh, then it came down to referendum and curriculum. Uh, I think referendum's going to come up regardless. Um, so, uh, I would put my emphasis then on curriculum in those two questions. So ten and eleven would be where I fall.
So one thing to keep in mind, that we're thinking of the questions in terms of a funnel, because the application questions is your pre-screening. They're not finalists yet. Every single person that applies for this position will answer these questions. So they should be pretty broad, to allow some latitude for them to answer them in a way that fits their background, their communication style, so pretty broad. Then, I'm looking at this list and I'm thinking, John, you've got some great questions for round one here, because we already know the areas you probably want to hit in round one with perhaps six people, right? It'll be around these areas you've just prioritized for us. Round two, you'll get more specific, and you'll actually have much deeper questions, much more detailed, sometimes a two- or three-part question. Scenario questions are great in round two. So you're really drilling down progressively through the application, round one, and round two. So you do want to have the first round be, excuse me, the application be broad enough that you get a sense of who they are, how they communicate, and what their background is. You will not get into the detail, though, that I think some of you are saying you'd like to know more about them. You'll have that chance in your interviews. This is simply meant to be big picture, who are you, tell us about it, and in terms of these two things, tell us about you. Does that make sense?
No, that makes perfect sense. And I think when I'm listening to everyone talk here, the, the two themes that come out at me are kind of for whether it's the facilities or, I mean, we have an expiring, um, strategic plan. You know, it's that vision, it's that we've passed two levees, how, how are those additional resources going to be deployed, um, all for the purpose of improving achievement. I mean, that was really when we went to the community with these levy requests, it was, we recognize that we can be doing better, um, but we need someone that's going to come in and kind of create that vision, that strategy, um, and do so in a way that is inclusive to all people, um, in our district. So I think that the themes I'm hearing are the achievement, the strategic vision, um, you know, that those are kind of the, maybe broad. But I like the way, I mean, maybe Vivian, even on that number nine...
Well, also, like diverse backgrounds, it's not, it's like, we have people whose grandparents owned farms here, and we have people who have just immigrated here. I mean, I'm not talking about diverse, like, there's just a certain group of people who are the diverse people, right? It's, the whole district is very diverse, you know, I mean, and somehow we have to become more cohesive, and everybody has to be able to succeed academically in that group. And I, like Annie said, you don't want to bring the top people down. You don't want to bring everyone to the middle, but you want people to succeed. You, you want to have the top people still be able to be on the top, but the people who are, are lagging, you have to pull them up.
Do you like the phrase diversity of thought in background somehow, feeding into a strategic plan or vision? I don't, just one thought, we said diversity of thought, but I'm sorry.
Yeah, I, I agree. We do have a very, um, diverse community. One thing I think, and I don't know where this would really fit, but I think it would be really important to have a person who is, um, um, very relatable, um, a person who is organized and can have a vision, um, to actually, um, move their team. A leader, a leader in that way, that this is what the plan is, this is what we're going to do, and somebody who is cool, calm, and collected, and, and can, um, you know, manage through, there's so many things, right, that pop up off and on for superintendents, but somebody that can come in and, and is just very calm and relatable and can organize and gets, gets his, his team to get, get the job done.
Experience managing through transition is another one that people use often, so... However you would like to proceed, these are all great questions. We're learning a lot. Wouldn't you agree?
Oh, no, and to your point, Barb, that, um, like, that to me sounded like a second interview question, because you start to get into open-ended and behavioral, right? I mean, what have you done? How have you done? Outline how you took this through the, you know, what's it like to work with the board? What would that look like day to day? Uh, how does the strategic planning work with the board? Do they understand their roles and responsibilities? So, yeah, on that, on the, on the application, it's a snapshot. The first round of interviews go a little bit deeper, but then by that point, ideally, you'll have however many three we'll use, because that's what we've been using tonight, where you can get into, you've talked about it, you seem committed to whatever the concept is, now tell us how you've worked with it and what you would see yourself doing here in Stillwater. And then that should be, that should help you make your decision as to who's, who's got the, the skill set.
So can I ask on number eight? Um, again, I'm, I'm envisioning the funnel, right? And we have a lot of strategic planning that needs to be done in a lot of different areas. But that, to me, feels like a funnel in terms of, what's your experience in creating the implementation that Tina's talking about? The, you know, it's kind of that funnel. I think that encompasses some for me, I'm just saying. And then, um, again, I, I do, there's something about question number nine that if we could work something in with the dynamics of the, of the achievement, because I think that is, I mean, what I'm hearing is the strategic planning, strategic visions, the implementation of it, and then also the, the achievement. I keep hearing that over and over from people, but...
Just to, just based on what Chair Sherman just said, um, for number nine, what came to mind, too, for me, is like the ALS program. You know, some of those are alternative programs that we have. Um, sometimes we forget that those students exist in the space of achievement. And I think it's important that we look at, there's a lot that's been done right now, but the question is, uh, we do things so these kids can, you know, go out and be able to do certain things for themselves, and the program is great. Um, we have some other programs as well, but it's actually including all of those programs in that space, and so creating those dynamics where somebody who has a vision can really bring to fore, uh, some of the greatness that we probably haven't seen yet. It's there, it's great, but, you know, can move it to the next level. So there's that part also for me for number nine.
Okay. I like the way that all of you are using language that's very positive and very inclusive, because the one thing you want to do with these questions, and the interview questions for that matter, is you want to, um, present an opportunity for the right person to come in and do exactly what you're asking them to do right now. Occasionally, boards right away, right away on the application itself want to say, um, tell us how you have brought a district out of statutory operating debt. Big red flag for applicants. I don't know if they get past their name and address on an application that asks something that frightening to a new candidate. How would you heal divisions that go back centuries? I mean, you don't want to say anything like that that is going to lose you applicants. So that's why we say, keep these general and positive, but it gives you a flavor of who they are. And I think I have a really good sense of what those areas might be.
I want to throw one part in there. Actually, um, I imagine a lot of these questions, they're going to cut and paste their answers across multiple applications. And if, somewhere in there, if you could sneak the word in, in the Stillwater area, so I'm looking at number ten there, future of education, comma, in the Stillwater area, which kind of forces them to break it down a little bit, to see if they have really just addressed it in general, or if they know Stillwater, or at least did a little homework. And even on your application to us, you, you did your homework on Stillwater when you, when you came to us, and that impressed me. That would also impress me on a candidate if they know a little bit about us before they get too far.
I agree. And the only thing I'm concerned about, though, is for someone coming in from out of state, that they are at a disadvantage because they know nothing about Stillwater. So they're not going to appear as well-versed in their answers as someone that lives next door. So you might be setting people up in the beginning to be on an unlevel playing field because they may, even though they do their homework.
Okay.
But we knew a lot more about Stillwater because of John...
Right.
...than he would have known with me alone. And that would have put me at a disadvantage, but I might have been a really great candidate. And yet, he had knowledge already that he built upon with a little research. So I, I would be a little hesitant to get that specific in the first question...
Okay.
...because there might be an applicant that says, I don't know anything about them, and I don't have time to spend a long time trying to research it. It's an excellent question for the interviews, though, when you start funneling it down tighter. Excellent point.
And I, I do think that, too, for me, what is so exciting for potential candidates in this position is, it is an opportunity to create a vision, and you have the resources in place with the levees. It really is, it, and, I mean, I'm biased, I guess, but it's a really awesome opportunity for a candidate to come in and really create and build, um, you know, a, a really great vision for them, for the district, for the people, in an inclusive and, in way for all students. So I'm, yeah. But I am glad that I'm, too, hearing a lot of the same themes, the strategic planning. Bev?
Um, I would just say that, you know, as, as I look at this list, it seems like several of these questions are what I might consider to be sort of blue-sky questions, um, in the sense that we're asking them to, you know, talk about what is the future of education? How has the pandemic, um, changed our view of what education can be? You know, I mean, tell us about an initiative that you are most proud of. All of those are sort of like blue-sky questions, and it seems to me that one of those, and I don't really, I'm not feeling very strong about which one it should be, but it needs to be a question where we can kind of see, what are they thinking about education, you know? And then, you know, and this is just a suggestion, but maybe we sort of have a question in there that, you know, how, how can a district, um, what is an approach for a district to, um, improve its academics in, you know, if the district is changing and becoming more diverse in its population? I mean, I wonder if we could marry those two and have that be a second question, because, you know, academic achievement doesn't happen in a, in a vacuum. And we, we do know that we are, we have a, a changing population here, a changing district. And, um, you know, just to get some thoughts on that might be a way to encompass some of the themes that we've been talking about here.
Would the board be okay if MSBA works with your chair to come up with the two questions? Okay.
I'm trying with that.
Okay. This, this has been a very healthy discussion, and honestly, it gives us a lot of insight. John's our expert in-house on questions for interviews, and I think this has been really useful. So are you okay, Allison? Working with me tomorrow and the next day to have two questions ready to go by Friday on the application? Okay. Thank you all. So I have a quick question, if you'll indulge me for a research question. This is the first time we gave you examples of two screening priority areas. Did it complicate it for you? Would it have been easier if I had just said, so in conclusion, what are the top two areas that you want to look for in your candidates at first blush? Would that have been easier than presenting you with this?
I like this.
You like seeing this as examples?
Yeah.
Okay.
Doesn't matter to me.
Doesn't matter? Okay. Tina?
I think the examples are good, and I think it was, it's also good to, you know, just say this is kind of what we're thinking about, but you're not limited. It's, it's good.
Okay. Just trying to decide if we should.
Yeah, I thought the examples were great. I mean, it, it's almost like a prompt, if you will, and not necessarily that these are exactly the ones that we want, um, but that it helps us kind of, you know, narrow our thinking.
And even though we, we don't necessarily all agree on the specific question, I do think it, it's very clear we agree on what we're trying to get at, in terms of the strategic vision and the achievement and the, you know, inclusivity and, I mean, I think that, and this probably helped that.
Okay.
Yeah, I think the, the questions were kind of higher level, too, so that we didn't immediately go into very specific little asks, because that isn't what we're trying to do for this part of the process.
Right.
So it kind of gave me an idea of what level of questioning you're looking for.
Okay. Thank you.
To Barb's point, this has been really helpful, because I'll probably be the one that takes the run at, um, round one and one with two questions. I have a much clearer sense now, I think, of what you're trying to get at than I would if I just looked at the hiring criteria, which is sometimes what we often do. So no, this has really been helpful.
Yay.
Yeah, that's...
I love continuous improvements. I'm kind of getting hung up on that.
It's an exciting opportunity here. This is an, I, I really am excited for this, um, whole process to play out for our community, for our students especially. It's exciting, I think, for the board to be a part of, so...
I want to thank you.
Thank you.
This has been really helpful. That is the end of the agenda that we had for tonight, though. Are there any other questions or things you need to know from us until you see us next?
Well, I asked, um, a neighbor who's Hmong, if she would translate the survey, and what she said is, um, she said basically, that won't work for the Hmong community. You would need to do a focus group with, um, with the Hmong community, a targeted focus group, to get their feedback.
Okay. Do you think she may be willing to help us conduct those?
I don't know. I'll ask her.
Okay. Let us know.
Touching while I'm doing the meeting is hard.
Yeah, it is. Okay. Thank you for that. So an online survey or hard copy survey would not be effective?
No, she didn't think so.
Are you comfortable having it in three languages, then? And perhaps Vivian and I can work on a way to potentially gather some input in focus group sessions with those folks? No charge for those. We'll just want to make sure that we have access to them with someone they trust and perhaps give us feedback, even if it's on the quantitative side or only the qualitative side. We'll try to get some of those voices in there, so, okay, we'll do the three languages. Okay. Thank you for following up on that, Vivian. Any closing questions for us tonight?
No, this has been very helpful. Thank you so much.
Wonderful. Well, we'll see you again soon, and there's going to be a lot of activity between now and Friday, and actually, the next Thursday, to get that survey ready to go in the languages.